Is there anything special for the work session?
No, it is.
We're going to hold this work session to order. And our first of the other item is the facilities master plan discussion on a bunch of content that's been loaded out for us. I think a lot of it's material that we've seen in previous sessions with the one exception of there's some additional information weighing from construction and contractor wasn't that kind of thing. Maybe we can start with some of the older than the material and then move into the discussion.
Okay, there was four items we matched today. One of them was an outlook on the future local construction projects and that was just simple comments from the city engineer from Bill, it's better, Bill Bill Gareder who's the president of Iowa State Building Construction Patriots Council which is approved by contractors. The Cedar Abbot's area, they do a lot of work here in Iowa City too. But we had, Fred and I had breakfast with them last Saturday with their bunch and then went walking, we explained the facility master plan. They were thankful for the projects. They think there's a need for them to keep their members busy. So that was a good discussion. And then today Fred and I met with Sadie Greiner who's the director of construction and design at the University of Iowa. And we talked about projects that have just been completed, projects that are in construction, projects that have already been bid that will start, and projects in the future. And it was a very informative discussion. I think Fred and I both left impressed. They have a pretty good system there. A really great software program where they keep track of all that. That's just another side story. But that was a good discussion. But I think the bottom line with all three groups is that they see in the short term, downturn, the number of projects that may kick up again with the University of Iowa in 2018 or 19 because I guess some pretty good sized brackets come which identify. So that was one memo. The other one is a memo on historical construction inflation cost. I went to RS Meads who's considered the expert of the country on keeping track of construction costs. They have what they call a historical cost index. So that spreads you at the end is applying that cost index and converting it to inflation. And in the last 50 years, there's been two downticks in inflation. One was in 2008. It went down one tenth of one percent, which tough to explain what happened there. There are, there were, there was a couple hurricanes in there, some other events, but I listed those out for you. The biggest downturn was in 1979. There was an 8.9% downturn in inflation. For those of us that are old enough to remember, we had even an odd gas days. We had an oil embargo. We had a couple wars in the Mideast. Inflation was running rampant. We actually went into a recession. So there was a market correction there after many, many months of inflation, high inflation, back to 2008. Part of that downtick there was China had finally industrialized and gotten their steel production plans up. Prior to that, they'd been buying a lot of scrap steel and steel from around the world while they were gearing up themselves. So that was the reason. Third memo is comments from all, not all, but most of the principals are affected by a proposed accelerated plan. Just asked them what they thought. Share their comments with you. You'd have that. So you've got all those comments. Most of them are pretty positive. Some of them, you know, want more, want what their, what's in the scope. But these are, these are what they've had to say. So. And then the last one is a list of all the contractors that have worked on our projects with the exception of four that we're still waiting on the list. There's 10, 10 major projects that are listed here. They're done by 195 different subs. We identified all the subs in our project. The data source, we didn't have duplicates. We have actually 195 different contractors that have been involved in those projects. There's, of the 14 projects that were done so far, eight contract, eight general contractors did the work on those 14 projects. So we've had a lot of repeat contractors. Four of those from Iowa City, one's from Independence, two from Cedar Abbot's, and one from the Dudes. So all the work's been done. The general contract work's been done by local contractors, like all over. And most of our subs are, 80% of them, 195 are from in-state, 20% are from out-of-state, Wisconsin, Minnesota, Kansas, Illinois, make up the whole go. And a lot of those are suppliers. There's a lot of companies that supply things like bleacher equipment or toilet paper dispensers, things like that. Those are listed. A lot of those are out-of-state firms that supply that. There are a couple exceptions. There's a couple flooring contractors that have done some work in the district and those are private state. That's, that's kind of some reversal of those four main memos.
Questions for the new material? Any one of the concerns was contention for resources here in the corridor, working with university and others that might have construction activities going on. Does it sound like that's what you found as a concern? Obviously you'd need to monitor that.
Yeah. Well, to balance with you, a lot of what I had for you before was that, talking to builders and talking to architects. So this was a good process to go through. It was good to listen to some other folks that do the same thing that I do, that we do. And basically said the same thing. You know, in the immediate future, it doesn't seem to be a problem. No guarantees that it won't tick up in the 18 or 19.
18 is only a month away.
Yeah, well, either 19 or 20. Yeah. So there, in 18, the university, they've already, for 18, they've already done a couple of big projects and they've got only two more to do. And the one, one of them is the power plant work. They're going to be doing a lot, there's eight packages on that, but it's all industrial type work and stuff. We probably would be using totally different contractors. And the other one didn't see, wasn't a major project, a major, major. So Ms. Greiner thought it would be a pretty good time for us to gear up because they're actually slowed down just a little. And they, they typically do $100 million worth of work a year where we've been doing 30, 35. And, but they have far exceeded that the last three or four years because of all the close flood work that they had to do. So that, that's been exceptional. The university, or the Iowa hospitals, that's a different department. They do their own construction management. They've been doing about 30 million a year. And they too exceeded that last couple of years with the children's hospital. But now that's done. So they're going to hopefully slow down. And even the Iowa residents halls, University of Iowa residence halls, they, they do five or six million a year too, but they typically do theirs in the summer. Theirs is a lot of renovation work. So universities, they're the big gorilla, no doubt about it. But they have slowed down from that frantic post flood pace that they're at, more of a normal pace. And if, and if you take the contractors for their word at the council that we met, they're all anxious to see projects and all of those workers, they, they hard to keep up.
Well, thank you for sharing that information and having the meetings and preparing the documents for tonight. I think what we were trying to accomplish in our work session this evening on this item is to understand where we, where we stand as a board in terms of the proposed accelerated plan, see if we can come up with some options that we think we would actually be able to vote on in the next board meeting on November 28th. And so there's been a lot of ideas being about, we've had community input, both in favor of accelerated plan, and I think some ideas around some concerns around some of the accelerated plan. And so hopefully what we can do tonight is get some of those items and issues out on the table, have a conversation, and see if there's a, an approach we can craft that we would find, I guess, amenable to all as we move into the November 28th board meeting. So with that, I would open it up to comments from board members, questions, ideas, things that we're concerned about, happy about with the accelerated plan. I'm happy to share my opinion. If you'd like just to kick off the conversation, maybe just, unless others would want to go first. I mean, I said some of this in the board meeting the other night that I think there's a couple of projects that are very worthy of moving out of sequence. And we've both seen in the accelerated plan that Tate and Alexander have been moved from at the very end to front loading. I think there's a number of reasons for that need, somewhat simplicity of the work that needs to be accomplished there. And so as I was studying materials this weekend, it, it really struck me that there's really only three projects that are presented as out of order. And I know that's been some of the comments that I've gotten from community members. There's some concern that we have a facilities master plan that's now supported with an approved bond. And now there's some concern that, okay, all of a sudden, we're just going to quickly start shifting the order of things. And so as I look through the materials, it really only looks like Garner, Tate, and Alexander are out of sequence from what they were originally proposed. Everything else is just accelerated. And so, and so with that, for me, the acceleration doesn't really feel that different from the original FMP in terms of the sequence, scope, intent. I am very keen on getting the facilities upgraded to meet our students' needs. The needs are real. I am keen on potential savings that we would realize through the acceleration process as long as we've got the proper capacity. That's been a concern of mine to manage that many projects at one time. But from the fidelity to the FMP, as it's been approved, I feel like this accelerated plan is actually pretty high fidelity with the exception of Garner, Tate, and Alexander, those three being out of sequence. Now, I am also personally very interested to see the results of the student potential analysis. I know that's planned to come forward. My, my thought on that though is we would need to analyze that data anyway as the board manages the FMP. We're constantly going to need to take that data into account and make decisions as we're working through the facilities projects. If that data showed we needed more seats at a school, that we are adding capacity, we of course as a board would take that into account and make those kinds of decisions. To me, taking that data into account would have been the natural work we would have been doing as a board to oversee the FMP. So I, I think that's an important input. I don't know that, where I'm landing right now is I don't know that I need to see that data for me to make a decision on the accelerated FMP or not. So those are just some of the considerations that I've been thinking about. I know we've also considered boundary discussions and trying to play that out in terms of the accelerated plan around facilities. I get a little hung up in there. I'm not sure, again, I, I feel like, I, I don't know how tightly woven those items are. And that's something I'm hoping we can talk about tonight too, to get people's views on, on that. But I'm, I will, I will say, I, I think that the accelerated plan brings some benefits. I think it is pretty high fidelity to the current FMP as it's been proposed. So that we're not doing a bait and switch, you know, in terms of changing out the plan. And so those are some of the things that I've been thinking about, I guess, around the plan. So I just threw that out there maybe to start the conversation.
I'll just follow up. I'm pretty much in line with what you said, for the most part. I think I've been open in that regard and I've made my feelings known since back when we were talking about it myself. So I would agree that I'm for what we're, what we've been shown. You know, some of the talk about needs and extra space, it was addressed in a couple of emails today, but I, I think I said it to them when we were discussing the man. I've never had a teacher or a principal tell us that we, we don't need that space. Don't give it to us. They're always going to find something to do with that space, right? Yeah. You know, when we're at Twain, we're sitting in a listening post in the library and they're telling us, hey, in a couple of days, this isn't even going to be here because we'll need another space for classroom. And that's a little disheartening. So anything we can do, I think, to get this stuff done quicker, I'm for. I said at the table the other day, that we're not changing the plans. Everything that's in there that we voted on is still in there. It's just moved up for the most part. And, you know, just, you know, some of the other objections have been hiring extra personnel. It's totally my own thought, but even if we bring someone in to help Duane, eventually Duane's going to leave, right? So it'd be nice to have someone.
I'm getting old.
Yeah. I was being nice about it. It'd be nice to have someone in the house though. Would be able to learn a little bit under, under Duane before possibly taking that role on themselves.
Other comments, questions, points of view?
You know, some things I, you know, as we compress it, you know, so we've said this is bookends, right? And so it's not like we're having an all or nothing conversation, right? Where it's all acceleration or none at all. And, you know, some of the, and I'm not, personally, I'm never, certainly was never concerned with extra capacity. I don't think that's a problem. I, if student potential analysis and boundary discussions change where we need capacity and how much we need where, I think it would be wise to be smart about that. As we look, you know, on the horizon of things that we might, you know, where the population is going and, you know, we have really segregated populations right now. And we have a board policy that says we're not going to have segregated schools. So any big decisions that we take play into that one. I know we'll take a lot of work on our part, just extra meetings, extra time. And this compression just stacks the work up. And so, you know, I'm not going to be comfortable saying, well, we'll do the FMP and when that's done, we'll start having those discussions. I don't think we can wait. Alexander can't wait. Twain can't wait. You know, they really can't. Personally, I'd like to see big changes next year. You know, what are we doing to make our policies happen? And I'm just looking around the board table and I see five years experience total. You know, this district doesn't have a good record of keeping board members, which means 2019 comes around, do we have four new board members that need onboarding and need a bunch of meetings at the beginning because they don't have any experience? Need all you folks is time to fill us in on all this stuff because we just weren't here. And I think that lack of institutional memory is more work for all of you and for all of us. And so that, I mean, I'm, and I know that's a very subjective thing. But when we're in the middle of it, it's really easy to be at a board meeting and say, we've got in 2019, you know, that many more appendix nine readings to look through and really give the attention to. Because sure, if, if I don't look at any of those things and just say, hey, move forward, I trust you, that's no more work for me. But if I have to look at 12 instead of six, that's that much more work that I can't focus on whatever else comes across our table. And so I'm just putting that out there as a very real, real concern that now it sounds great and it looks great on paper and the tax savings is there, but there's also a really bad history of keeping board members at the table. And that can be for a lot of different reasons. But the one constant is that very, we just have five years of experience and we're not sitting here with a lot of institutional memory. And I, that's just something I'm putting out there that. As, you know, to the extent that these big decisions will affect our facilities, we just give ourselves less time and less maneuverability to respond to anything that might change that comes in front of us. So that's why I hope we're not having an all or nothing discussion. That it's all full bore ahead or we're not going to do it at all. I'd like, if it's a bookend, can we find the 75% solution? And obviously that's very subjective stuff too. I know the way this is planned out, it's like Domino's. So that means it's not a, that means it's an all or nothing. But what word was, no, this is the idea, right? We're just going to put it out there as the most aggressive, let the board think about it, get some more information. And I think you're right, Duane, that you got a lot of good information. But if we had done what you guys wanted us to do, you would not have gone out and gotten that information. We would have voted on this, you know, weeks ago and it just wouldn't have been full steam ahead. Not that the information you got was any different, and I appreciate that. But at the same time, if it had been drastically different, I don't want to be way into a building project and say, well, you know, now we've, since we built this thing out here, but our boundaries actually have kids going over here, we have to move kids to fill this space. You see what I'm saying? I'd rather our policies drive our facilities and our facilities drive where we put kids. And I'm not, I'm not saying that's what's here in the plan, but I'm just trying to imagine some landmines that could come up, you know, because we're building things fast. I have zero worry about capacity. I don't really have any worry about hiring somebody. I like that we can hire them and pay them with a bond. I think having a replacement with Duane is a great idea. However, there's all these other things that will be unknown. You know, there's decisions out there that we haven't made or even talked about. And I think, I'm sure everybody in this room knows, when we start talking about some pretty, like really getting our schools to 50% FRL, that those are going to be a lot of emails and that's going to be a lot of community time. And that's just, and they're not going to be easy to read and there's going to be a lot of nastiness. I mean, that's what I went through on the '09, when we did redistricting in '09. I saw, just experienced a lot of that. And so I know the toll that that takes. Again, I don't think it needs to hold this up, but those are my concerns.
I guess I'll go. I'm trying to make this cohesive thought process because it's been pulled around my brain. It's not all that cohesive right now. We've all got a lot of emails, mostly today, of various people about having to put on. Seen a lot of thoughts on both sides. And as I look at, I look at the information and it's totally valid information, but I also look at where it's coming from. The ones that are very vocal about accelerating the plan, we're very vocal about passing the bond. The ones that are very vocal about not accelerating, we're very vocal about not passing the bond, right? I have got information from a couple of folks that sort of landed in the middle. And people, I feel like are some of the smartest people I know and very involved and somewhat impartial. And kind of the general sense I got from them is kind of what I've been saying is that I like the idea of acceleration, but looking at the whole thing and much like JP just said, is a bit much. And so as, to get us past, you know, next Tuesday, I would be willing to have a vote on, you know, what we want to accelerate, you know, this year and next year, and then leave the rest of it open. What that all entails, that's going to be kind of up to each individual thought process. So I'm trying to be a little bit about where I'm thinking there. Janice Wright is not doing a whole lot of stuff out of order. The north central and southeast is moving up, you know, half a year, right? It's not a huge change to it. The arguments that hurt against moving up north central, those arguments aren't predicated on a six month difference in timing. It's either that they need it or they don't need it. So there's some questions sort of around that in general. I have a kid there. I think they need the space there myself. That's my personal statement on that. You know, we use the word no-brainer in regards to Tate and Alexander. I think that might be simplifying it a little bit. Alexander is facing some very real needs right now. So again, as JP said, if we could tomorrow fix things, that'd be great. Having it, you know, moved up several years is good. It's not going to solve their immediate needs. I mean, I think we have multiple problems with Alexander. They've got, probably class sizes are still a little too big. And that kind of goes to, we should maybe look at Ramb in a different way. But they also have kids out in portable. Both of those things require, in my opinion, space inside the building, either to have more classes in there, to have class sizes smaller, or get kids inside either way. They need more space in there. Because the other alternative is just start yanking kids out of there and then you've got to find other places to put them. I do think, no brainer still might be the wrong word, but I think Tate is appropriate. Sort of, I, I do think that we had already talked about quite a while ago, which has kind of gotten lost here. Now I can't even find it, the moving up the, the design process for Citi. I think that is a very valuable tool as we move forward. There's a lot of ideas floating around on what CBI can and can't do. A lot of ideas floating around on what we can and can't do with the Hoover property. And I think any sort of tangible thing to, to look at is a start to be doing now, going that way or not. But I do feel a little squeamish on looking a little too far past, you know, the next year, what we're accelerating. So I'd be okay with on Tuesday kind of voting on, you know, that 12-month plan and what, what would fit in there. Some of us, you know, maybe end of this year and some of us starting next year. You'll be able to look at that. What I would like to see is we potentially leave here is to have a couple of different proposals of what things we want to be on that list of things to vote on next Tuesday. If it's the same exact, what are the five things that it is on here? Or if we say, let's have that one as a proposal and maybe we'll have another one has three things on. Or they'll like us to at least know what we're looking into to get some of that community input from a broader range of folks and have us time to kind of chew on it a little bit to make sure that we make our decision. It's a lot of money that we asked for in bond, you know, to go with fiscal side of things. If we can save money, that's a good thing. Getting kids into spaces, you know, not out in the portable sooner than later, that is also a good thing. But I just want to make sure that we're, we're smart about it and not, you know, put the cart before horse a little bit. But we are going to talk a little bit about boundaries and that does affect things to a certain degree. And we can't get around with some of the needs of the schools just by changing values, but it does affect some of the capacity stuff. I will say, I know a lot of people have their feelings on whether or not they like what the, you know, building administration has to say. That weighs a lot on me. So reading all of their thoughts on accelerated plans for their various schools, that means a lot. Most of them were talking about how it addresses the needs that they have now. Most of them were not talking about, well, 10 years from now, we may need some more space, right? And how many of you, you all read on, they were like, we have needs now and accelerating this plan addresses that. So that carries a little bit of weight. So that's kind of what I'm thinking about.
Can I ask a question? So if we were to decide, say, these five projects, we want to accelerate and the number of five are, and we kick those off in the design process, what would be the next deadline to stay sort of within your, you know, building, construction cycle? That we would need to come back and say, what's the next wave of work that we need to, you know, kick off? And is there, I'm, I'm sorry, I'm an operations person. I, I work in scope, schedule, budget. And so we've got our scope, our project, we've got our budget, the go bond. But what's the next wave of time that we would need to come back and say, hey, kick off this next wave of accelerated projects? Is that a year from now before the next construction cycle? Or what would that look like?
From my perspective, we usually start design work in the spring, early spring or late spring, sometimes even early summer for the following year. So in other words, for the projects that we want to start in 2019, we would actually start the design work May, maybe April, June, somewhere in that time, depending on the scope and how large the project is. So what we're, what this does is it really doesn't make our life easier at all. It, we're having to now consider proposals and get plans done on an accelerated time plane as well. So not that we can't do it, but we're going to, since we're done getting those started next spring, we're going to start the next round.
So May, say, we have to come back to the board to say if we're going to continue it, another wave of accelerated projects after, if, if we were to approve a first wave?
The example I'd give you, if you follow the plan, the way it's played out, then the next round is Schimmich, Wood, and Garner. City Iowa we won't start until soon we approve that. West I face two we are starting. So it's Schimmich, Wood, Garner. That we would need to have some direction so we can get architects hired in the spring for next.
If, if those are deemed to be the priority projects, I mean.
Right. I'm just, I'm just reading it the way it's written here. And the only, and this, you know, this idea came to us, we were to put together a plan that would demonstrate how we get accelerated. The other thing that really is troublesome if you start moving projects is where the temporary units go. Because right now, they're already sitting in southeast. We moved them there early because we didn't, we've done them. So they're there waiting. And that goes to northwest. So it changed northwest even down the line a couple years. It's problematic because we need that ten plex at southeast till we're done. Then it goes to northwest. Get a six plex of Lucas that we can move to Schimmich and then we can move it to Kirkwood. Okay? So those projects are kind of dependent on the use of modular classrooms. There are some projects that don't need modular classrooms. For example, Horn, Horn is IT, lighting, doors, things like that, that we can get locked down in the summertime. But when you talk about Schimmich, we're talking about interior classroom HVAC systems, things like that. So just keep that in mind when you discuss that. But to answer your question, the next wave, we start next spring.
Just touching real quick on capacity, because that's been brought up a few times. There's only one elementary school that's There's only one elementary school that specifically stated in here to get a classroom addition, aside from Alexander, and that's Kirkwood, that currently has temporaries outside, I don't know, two, four?
Couple, two.
Yeah, as well as music and art. And all the other schools listed, Lemmy, Borlaugh, Garner, Wickham and Wood do music and art, which is basically almost giving them two classrooms plus music and art. And I would hope that we would think that music and art are important enough to be equitable across the district, at least in the, you know, what we planned out here. I know it doesn't give music and art room classes to everyone, but again, that's why we've got to look past this at some point. And then on the secondary level, Southeast has an addition for classrooms. They're currently having a temporary there. Northwest would have an addition. Liberty, who we all know needs an addition for classrooms. And I think City High is the only other one that's listed for having classroom additions to it. It's not adding a ton of classrooms everywhere.
I haven't, so that was in a lot of the emails. I guess I haven't heard that from this group. Lots of concerns about too much capacity. Did I miss something? Because I would have all those emails.
You're talking about boundaries and changing it and what needs are going to be there. I mean, when you go off of what's on the plan and what's in the GEO bond language, it's not necessarily going to be like, well, now Lemmy needs seven more classrooms, so we got to add seven more classrooms there.
Yeah, but it could be the type of classroom you put in, depending on what's there. If you decide to pair schools, you might not need a, you know, you might do a different type of classroom that's maybe more flexible, right, that takes into consideration rather than something that's more specialized. So for me, I'm not worried about space, but when we get into the nitty-gritty of the design details, I mean, that's kind of my concern, that those decisions are driving our facilities. And that's, so for me, overall, space is certainly not a concern. I've been in some crowded schools and I get it. So, but maybe the type of space might be affected by those design pieces. And maybe it's not much, but you know, maybe six months makes a difference, you know, maybe. I mean, I'm sympathetic to the temporaries. That's why it's going to be easier to accelerate those projects that don't need that domino thing going.
Others, Lori, you've seen a film.
Lori?
Lori, I have a few questions. So I had asked this before and I had asked about what the savings would be used for. And Craig said that it really was just a savings to the taxpayers. But in Dr. Schultz's write-up that he has, he's thinking that some of that savings will come to West High. So can you clarify, is money going to be spent on?
Well, I'll clarify my conversation with Lori, but he's fully aware now that he has some additional needs that he'd like to see that, one is a front office and administration area. Another one is to create a fly space in the auditorium, you know, things like that. And, oh, excuse me, what's that? A fly space.
In the stadium.
Stagecraft.
Stadium in the theater, yeah.
Those are his requests, not mine. And he also understands, what he understands is that we're creating a wish list for future sales tax projects and most likely that extra work room out there, he knows that.
So his write-up though indicated that he was thinking some of that savings could be potentially put towards, are we going to clarify that everybody knows that's not how this works? Our savings is to the taxpayer, not just we put it into the project somewhere.
I don't think I have any more to add than what I wrote back to you in response to that.
Okay, I guess that's important to me. I feel like we committed to certain things. And one thing that I've struggled with is that, you know, I was sitting here when we were talking about what was going to go into the GEO bond. And at that time, you know, we talked about, does it make sense to have a seven-year project span? And we were told it makes sense to have a seven-year project span because that allows for flexibility. And some of us at the table said, we're comfortable with that. We feel like we need to, you know, compress that timeframe. Now we've compressed it here, but we're still doing the same number of projects. So I, you know, I can see it both ways, but we ended up with a seven-year span because we were told at that time that was preferable. Now we're being told if we're going to accelerate, you know, it's November and you want a decision now for 2018 projects, but you want a decision by May for 2019 projects. But we didn't have a decision last November for 2018 projects. I mean, we didn't have, do you see what I'm saying? So we're kind of changing the rules in the middle. I would have liked to have seen this option six months ago. I feel like I would have liked to have taken to the voters what the final product was. And I feel a little frustrated that as soon as it passed, I mean, literally within a month, we have a new plan. That's frustrating.
And again, that option, it didn't exist six months ago. I mean, we hadn't even considered it, it wasn't requested. And in terms of the schedule, we've already started the design work for the projects in 18 that are on the existing, so that's your plan. And just going down the road, we would start in the spring for those that are in 19. We wouldn't have changed anything. So that's not an unusual thing. It's just that if we move those four or five projects up, that's what we're talking about.
Let's be perfectly clear. We responded simply to stakeholders' questions. Can you accelerate the plan? The response was, what you see tonight. This isn't our plan. It's not our idea. I'm more than happy to stay with the current plan, okay? I told you that before. This requires a lot of work on our part, okay? But we formulated a response. We gave you what it might look like to accelerate it to its max. Yes, there's some savings to both the taxpayer and to the plan itself. You have the construction inflation concept that I shared with you in the documents tonight. That accrues to the plan itself, okay? If that's realized, you can save four to five million dollars by doing this plan. On the finance side, if we accelerate the sale and lock in lower interest rates, you can save as much as $10 million to the taxpayer. Both of those are good things. You don't have to do that. This is a complete board decision, okay? And I'm frustrated that you would accuse us of changing the plan because we didn't. We did not change the plan. We're following the plan, okay? We were asked to provide data on whether or not we could accelerate the plan. Yes, we can accelerate the plan, but it's going to require some work on our part. We might have to hire some extra help to do it. In fact, I know we will because we'll burn ourselves out doing this without the extra help, okay? But the extra help doesn't even come close to the cost of what you can save, the plan and the taxpayer both, okay? I'm not advocating for this. Dwayne's not advocating for this. This is a complete board decision. You're representative of your community. You do what's in the best interest of your community, okay? That's what we're here tonight to discuss, as far as I'm concerned. That's the essence of what we brought to you. I'm completely ambivalent on this, on this whole issue. Love to stay with the plan as it is, okay? But I'd love to accelerate it too because there's some real positive things that can happen for kids and for staff, okay? You've already laid that out. You've identified that as board members, okay? Make a decision and let's move on. One of the things I want to caution you about is that this isn't just a collection of projects. They're sequenced. And they have, they have to go in the right order for us to get the right pieces in the right place in the puzzle, okay? So you can't just pick and choose what projects you want to do next, okay? If you choose four more projects and they're not the projects that we have on here tonight in the sequence, then we're going to have to go back and say, is this possible? And we're going to have to work through all of those sequencing details, all right? So if you want multiple plans to come back to the board meeting on the 28th, you better tell us what projects you want accelerated tonight so we have a little time to work on it, okay? So we can put them in the right sequence and we can tell you whether or not it's going to work or not, all right? I'm just, I'm just saying they're just not a basket of projects. They have some logic to the way they flow. And especially when we have to move a 10-plex or a 6-plex or whatever we have out there in order to make them happen, right? So that's our bottom line.
I appreciate you clarifying that. And I do recall you saying that this was not your plan. You started the work session with that. Thank you. It's feeling to me like this is what is desired, but that's probably me just being this way.
Well, the ones that picked the order, they went in. The public didn't do that. They asked us to accelerate. So we did the best to put them in the right order.
But even then, from the original FMP, they accelerated, there's still very, as I said earlier, the fidelity to the original FMP is very, very high with the three exceptions of Tate, Alexander and Garner slightly out of sequence.
We've shared with you the logic of why that was. It's because we can start those projects without impacting what the educational process that goes on in those buildings, okay? And it wasn't just some random selection, oh, let's do Tate, okay? That wasn't how we approached this.
And if I could finish, and I will own that I've been saying, you've heard me say it, that I want a Tate and Alexander at the beginning of the list. I've been saying that since a year ago. So thank you. I mean, I appreciate seeing that option. I feel like nobody heard me when I said that before. Clearly you did, so thank you. Another thing that I had mentioned before, and I hear what you're saying. The projects are in order for a reason. Kirkwood Elementary doesn't have enough preschool seats. There aren't enough preschool seats at Corvo Central. That's an area of the district where we have high need students. And we have two schools that don't have enough preschool. Wickham doesn't have any preschool. So I was hoping if we were going to accelerate, that maybe that could be towards the front because I think that would give us a lot of thing educationally for a buck. I hear what you're saying. You've put it together this way. I just, I, that's another thing I've been saying for a while is that I wanted, you know, any kind of preschool situation to be as close to the beginning as possible because we know that preschool has a big impact on education.
You're aware that Corvo Central and Twain are not in the bond program, so.
Yeah, I just mentioned Corvo Central because it's just, it's like an area problem. It's not like there's another school like a mile away that kids can go to for preschool. And we did expand it to some community partners, Handicare, so that's great. We've done some things, but it's a geographic issue there.
So what I would encourage you to ask us to do is to think about, I'll call Phase Three, okay? Which would be funded with future sales tags or bonds or whatever and prioritize those, you know, the preschool rooms that haven't been done and things that aren't done with this plan. We should come up with Phase Three and I fully intend before I leave to make sure that there's some kind of plan to go through the rest of those buildings should more funding become available with the sales tags.
You remember, we started that process in January of 17. We have, we have Phase Three wish lists. Alexander was actually on that list that you moved as a board into the primary list that we have now of projects. But there's still a lot of other projects on that wish list. We can certainly add to it, okay? We just need, we just need you to add to it.
And again, I'm not talking about Corvo Central because I want it added. I'm talking about it because the preschool need at Kirkwood. Because there isn't just another place where kids can go.
It'd be a worry, but we just need to develop a plan for that.
So I, my question would be, is that possible to move further up just to try and get some more kids and seats there?
Well, the other thing I was going to say is that we shouldn't, let's take the example of the sales tax basis in 2019, which we expect to have a discussion over this day. Let's say if it does, there's no reason why those programs, that other Phase Three can start well before this one even finishes. I mean, they can overlap each other. And in 2020, this starts to teep off pretty good. So you could gear up with this Phase Three before Phase Two, I'll call this Phase Two, is done. So keep that in mind.
Yeah, and that's a whole nother discussion.
It is.
I mean, we've spent an awful lot of time while I've been on the board talking about facilities. And one thing we said in the bond vote was that we were going to not talk about facilities so much and now we're going to double down potentially. We might. It's the board decision. It might not. I really want to be cognizant of that, how we spend our time. I mean, already I'm sensing from you, you've put some time into this. If we change it, that's more time.
When you have board meetings a week apart, we spend a lot of time collecting data. All we do.
I know you do. And when we ask for a change, you'll spend more time on it and so it's...
I'm thinking about next week's meeting and every two days to go.
So I'm being cognizant of everybody's time, board time, administration time. This is an awful lot to ask for everyone, so.
We're not asking. We're just providing data.
Yes, thank you. You're not asking for it, but it's an awful lot of us to ask of you, you know, to take this on if we should choose to go this route.
We all work for the community. We work for the betterment of our kids. You need to do what's right for your kids and for the community. And that's a decision you as a board member need to make.
Yeah, and as you can tell, I'm sort of, I'm just sharing my thought process right now. I really haven't formulated a strong opinion, Janet, to answer your question. I don't know exactly where I'm at. These are just things that have come through my mind as I've thought this through. I also though do think I could support moving, doing, proceeding with Alexander and Tate. That's something I know I could support on Tuesday night. Beyond that, I'm not sure.
Can I just touch on one thing you said in the presentation and when this was presented to us even way back in 2013 was that the district could only handle three or four projects a year, which is why it was laid out like that. And the only way that we can do the acceleration is to bring our people on and then we could actually do more than three or four projects a year. So that wasn't a discussion because that's how it was laid out. That's why we didn't accelerate it. That was to start three or four a year because they would also be finished in three or four a year after you got past the first construction season. So the second year actually plumps up to like seven projects or eight projects a year. So that's what we were looking at. It wasn't the first three or four. It was the, when they lap over each other. And you need people to get buildings ready, but we also need people to manage the construction. So I, I was correct. A couple of people would make all the difference, but it's going to take that. I know it's a difference.
But it's not like they can do it all though. I mean, some of this stuff has to be done by you, some of this planning stuff. We can't pay somebody to do this stuff. So this is more work for you. I mean, let's just be honest about it. It is.
Already has been.
Before you jump in, I just want to say, I wasn't advocating that we do some sort of cherry picking and say, here's a plan with 12 different schools versus the five we already have. I was more thinking along the lines of the five or how many it is that we've got accelerated or not doing all of them accelerated. Isn't a fair point to say that we can accelerate some and everything else can stay in the plan as it is and it doesn't affect anything else? If we looked at bringing Kirkwood up and moves Schimmick back, right? Because they're using the same 10-plex. So that would be a concern. But if it's, we move these up and everything else we're not touching now, it's not... That's what I was thinking of, maybe a couple of plans for Tuesday is, you know, this and then maybe half of them, for instance.
I thought about that today, Saturday. I was thinking about, what if we just did those four and then accelerate the design proceed? What would that do to next year if we didn't touch the rest of the plan? In fact, it leaves a pretty big hole. We don't have near as many projects to start next year. If you left the plan the way it was, if you looked at the schedule, 2018 starts are, excuse me, 2019 is West High Phase Two, City High, which will start. But North Central, Southeast moved up, then we don't have to start with two high school projects in 2018 if you left the plan the rest of the way it was. So it does, it does kind of leave a hole. We're not, we're not working toward capacity maybe if we don't do that. You get that? I'm trying to think that through. Do you anticipate that you might ask that question?
So, and I'll just say one last thing. Boundaries is not something that, is something that also requires your time. It's not entirely Steve's job. There will be some bussing questions. There will be some operations questions that will go along with that. So just, so we're all aware, if we are going to put those demands on administration and these demands, we probably are going to max out on what we can do. If we wanna talk about parent schools, we're gonna come to you and say, can you give us some operational information about parent schools? That's gonna take a lot of time, I mean, at some point, I think the board is gonna have to choose how we spend our time because you can only do so much.
We all have different areas of our time.
Well, I, I just, I don't want us to, to put ourselves in a situation where we're so stressed that we have people resigning and, you know, we've already, we have, we've had a lot going on and we've had a lot of resignations in the past few years, so let's try and, you know, come up with something that works for everyone. I'll stop.
Ladies first.
Thank you, I, mine will be really quick, really simple, and I've taken into account a lot of what has been said at the table, but I keep stopping at my responsibility to the community that I represent. And I've heard from quite a few people and surprisingly quite a few people from Hills. Their biggest sticking point is the savings and by accelerating a plan that allows for us to potentially go back out to the community to tackle some of those issues that's not covered in this plan. And for me, just separating myself as a board member, as a taxpayer, that's going to have somebody in college in a few months and knowing that I could have saved a couple of dollars here and maybe down the line when you come and ask me for more money, how likely am I willing to say that you, the board, me too, actually took into account their responsibility to me as a community member? And to the kids, because truly for me, and that's, I need to give you a sense of where I'm leaning more, the acceleration, I recognize that it will take a lot more of our time commitment and a lot more of administration time commitment in dealing with not only overseeing all of the projects tied to Appendix Nine and the steps, I should say, but also boundaries that we would like to discuss and look at. If we're talking about parent schools, I think that comes down to us as board members, how effective are we when we come to these board meetings, how prepared are we and how effective? Are we all just wanting to go on record as having something to say or are we adding value to the conversation? That's where we're going to look at saving time. And I, I, right now, I, I don't know how, I recognize accelerating a couple of good projects, I'm willing to look at a plan for Tuesday, but I would like to see us looking at the entire acceleration of this FMP because I think as a community, from what we're hearing, not only from the building people, but from a vast majority of, or just, I believe a lot of people on both sides, some recognize the benefit to them as a taxpayer and to our community.
Okay, I'll try and bring it all together. I share a lot of the concerns that have been already expressed. I wanna echo what Lori was saying. Not all of them directed at her, she also directed at me. I have, I have concerns with this, that if the stakeholders came to you and prompted all of this, I'd like to know, I'd like to see the, the letters so I can be more effective in my letters to get that type of action. I'm all for saving money, I wouldn't spend it before we've saved it, but when we're talking about boundaries, it's moving targets. And I was at the listening post with Jan and Paul at Alexander and they're screaming for help right now. And I kick myself that I didn't put it on the agenda for the upcoming meeting because it deserved it. And if that's what was heard at Twain, we should have had that on as well. Because that's real students right now that need assistance. When we don't look at the weighted students in the building, the numbers are not good numbers. Because we're looking, why are we rushing the addition at Alexander, that's one of our newest, newest schools. Every time I run into Ron Stutzman from Hills, he tells me, Phil, why the hell you got temporarys at your brand new school? You guys can't see two years ahead?
That's a pretty simple answer.
Well, no, I, I understand, because of our, our weighted model. And if we go with the addition at Alexander with our weighted model, we're only adding sixty seats. Four classrooms, it's fifteen room, that's all, you know. What could we, how could we help that by a boundary decision? Or if some developer buys a trailer park and turns it into high-end condos? All those things change what we do and we don't, we don't control zoning, we don't control that. You know, how land is developed and everything along those lines. During the bond discussion, I brought up things about, you know, special ed needs and career and technical things and they said, oh, Will, we can put that in, I haven't heard any discussions about that going forward. And, you know, the Hoover vote, we, this district denied the citizens the right to weigh in on a decision. And that concerns me and those people still have a right to weigh in on that issue. And I feel that that's a significant part of the puzzle going forward. If we, if Hoover were not destroyed, that's capacity we don't have to rebuild. Granted, there's renovations, everything, I might be good on that one. But that's an asset that we're gonna take away that we already have. And the gymnasium at Tate, I was at the, I remember Ann Feldman bringing to her attention when the discussions were going and everybody was getting a gym except for Tate and I brought to her attention. Tate Gym is twenty-six students, is that right? Is that what came out in the data the last time, there's twenty-six students at Tate that are being bussed for, or, or going for gym? So we're, we're building it, building that, if that's what was in the documents? I believe it, I don't have it, okay, well, I think it was in the, in the last one. You know, I, I, you know, you could flop Tate into Hoover, it has a gym. The students then at, at Tate Hoover could take AV classes at City High and meet a five-minute bell schedule. And it's on the same, it had the same good bus connections as everything else.
Have you seen the gym at Hoover?
Excuse me?
Have you seen the gym at Hoover?
Yes, I have, my daughter went to Hoover, yes. It's small, but it's, but it's a gym, it works, it works. So, and the, like I say, the discussion, as far as I'm concerned, when we're talking the numbers, we have to really be looking at weighted students and the population of students going into those buildings. That way, so I, you know, I, and I have a problem that if stakeholders brought this to staff's attention and they were pursuing that, I would just like, you know, and like Lori says, we're at these tables and the, and the big board's down. I mean, we used to have and Lynch used to turn around and point to the facilities master plan, we don't even have that up anymore. You know, this is the progression and I understand your progression, you guys went through a lot of work and it's timed and, and absolutely, your building, it's a ballet of having everything in the right spot at the right time. And changing one thing changes everything. So, like I say, I, I, I am concerned that we're not being very transparent with this whole procedure. And, well, I mean, we're talking about it, but the way it, it kinda came here so right after the vote, so quickly and that, that's, that's a concern for me. And I think that we were just not addressing certain issues at all. And I, I have real concerns that, you know, when we don't look at the weighting of students going into these buildings and we just look at head counts and things of that nature, we're, we're not getting the full story and everything that way. And I appreciate all the information and documents that were provided to us, but like I say, I haven't had, I, I, I saw my email at four o'clock, saw that there was things in there and I did not have time to, to give it the justice it needed before this meeting to, to do that. So I look forward to going through that and I'm sure I'm gonna have some more questions going forward before a discussion on Tuesday and that. And as far as the time commitment and that, we all signed on to it, whatever it was. And it is what it is and we've had a lot of discussions about facilities and things like that and other discussions haven't happened and I look forward to getting the end committee up and discussing those things, but we've, like I say, I'm not a, I, I, everyone knows where I come down on that, Sean was right, the young people, it's pretty much, positions that we started with were positions that were what they were before. But I'm listening to my constituents as well.
One quick clarification for Phil and Mike's four comments is that the reason for accelerating the design at City High is to help resolve how Hoover might be used.
Well, I, I understand that, but I think it, that's, that's very good, we, they, we should have had that, 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 and I appreciate what you're saying, Dwayne, I agree with you, but yeah, we should have that as soon as possible so the community has an opportunity to see exactly what's gonna be done with that space.
We didn't have the funds, now we have the opportunity to do that and build the right place. That's the reason we suggested moving on the City High design.
But they need an opportunity to, to cast a ballot, which is their.
I'm gonna jump in and agree with a lot of what you're saying and then disagree with some of it. And it's kind of two parts when we talk about casting ballots on that and looking back on hindsight being what it is, we've actually had it on the ballot to look at Hoover already so it's not hanging over our heads and, you know, put that to the voters. What we did put to the voters is a giant bond vote that passed almost two to one. So there is a lot of support to the plan and, you know, throughout the entire campaign, people ask the question, do you support the bond or not? You know, it's pretty consistent saying that I support the plan and the bond is what's funding it. The plan, again, is not changing all that much, I get that. The one part that I would totally agree with on is as we look for it and we look at capacities in schools and we look at boundaries and things like that, when we're looking at RAM, we do need to use weighted stuff, right? Like that weighted enrollment to say, alright, further down the line, if we're gonna want classes to be smaller there, capacity is not the same as it was when we figured it out before. And, you know, that's, leads to some of those changes that we've had, capacity numbers kind of jumped back and forth over the years, you know, as we've kind of looked at some of these numbers, right, policy changes affect that. Using, you know, just FRL to determine what RAM should be is kind of narrow-minded. I mean, there's a lot more going on there as to what, you know, what gets Alexander, Twain to the, to the needs that they have now. So that definitely needs to be looked at. However, the plan itself is sort of tied to what we already said we were going to do. Whether we move it forward or backward, there's not a lot, as Paul mentioned, capacity changes going on there. So while we may have short-sighted certain things because we weren't using weighted enrollment, that's neither here nor there. We either want to move some of these things up to get kids in the spaces faster and save money, or we don't. Flexibility is important and I think that was the big thing as we were passing the bond. And if you do say, we're just gonna move it all up, that does take away some flexibility. So I am mindful of it, I'm not going to say, pass the bond, whatever you got for the FMP, it's gold, let's just do that. We're gonna have to address it, you know, on an annual basis at the very least and if we are starting to look at acceleration, then semi-annual basis, right? And I'm okay with that. There, all of that other stuff also needs to be looked at. And I think they, they have overlap, but they can be looked at independently as well.
Yeah, I'm really with you there, Sean, I get, because what I'm leery of, and I'm not saying it'll turn out poorly, but I'm, I'm leery of just saying, all go right now, boom, and then not in losing flexibility. I also don't want a huge hole where we're paying somebody to sit around, I, I have a feeling there's things for people to do. You know, we probably have plenty, but I guess as a board, I'd like to be making sure that, you know, we have our eye on the ball as we go forward. I know we're gonna approve every project, look at that, but as we're moving forward, maybe we are doing this on an annual or semi-annual basis and having more of this kind of a discussion, which lets us, is a lot easier than a board meeting, to, to talk about them, to have a conversation. I'm thinking, and kind of, you know, feeling the tension that, I, I have to say, just with the work we have in the bond, even if we wanna accelerate five people, the hires are probably a smart idea, especially since we can pay that out of bond funds right now. I just think that's, I think that helps us, I don't see, I have no issue with that, I think we probably need to pass, I think we'll do a better job if you can focus on what you're good at. I do think having some sort of, an idea of attrition in the future, I think that's very smart as we move forward and it'd be nice to have somebody, hopefully, you know, we make a really good hire, they turn out really well and it is somebody who we feel confident moving forward that could step into a role with hopefully fewer projects because hopefully we aren't doing a big bond like this every ten years. Hopefully we have taken care of some of our capacity needs and it's a little bit more keeping up as we go along, I would hope. Obviously with this kind of growth, that might, I mean, if it keeps up, then we're gonna keep having that, that problem, that great problem to have. But that's kind of where I'm at, I mean, I just, I think we have to be cognizant of the time, not just our time, but your time as well and I think I'd rather do a little bit more of this work upfront to make sure we, you know, kind of have our eye on the ball than say, hey, this is what it is, we don't have to think about this thing for a few more years.
So just to piggyback on both of your comments, it's what I was trying to lean to when I was making my first remarks around like the student potential analysis when we get that data in. Flexibility is us, reviewing new data, analyzing the data, understanding the impact and making decisions around how we're going to address it. As a board, this is what we're gonna do day in, day out, weekend, week out, to make sure we're doing the proper thing for our students, teachers and the facilities, at least in this matter, in the right way. And so it, it is gonna take work, it's gonna take work whether it's accelerated or not. And so the flexibility is, I never would ever have thought that we approve any version of the accelerated plan that will just like, go do your thing, we'll check back in eighteen months and see how you're doing. This is an ongoing oversight, as we get new data and new conditions arise, we will respond properly, that's what our jobs are. And so, so for me, if, if this is accelerated, it's gonna take time, we need to have the proper check-in time, semi, actually, I was playing around on Sunday afternoon with what a resolution might look like, what a motion might look like and one of them I wrote was, you know, a semi-annual review of the plan with the new data as we gain it through designing processes, student analysis, whatever, boundary decisions, whatever. But we're never gonna have all of the data that we need to make a perfectly confident decision on everything. If there's anything I've learned in my career, you could spend years in analysis paralysis trying to get every piece of data, every analysis to come in to inform a decision, it never happens that way, sorry, Lori, I'm getting congestion. So, so we have a plan, we have a bond that was passed, we have the funding. What we're suggesting is to accelerate it, we're not changing the FMP, the projects are the same, we're legally bound to deliver on those projects, but we do have the flexibility to take into consideration new inputs to guide some of the design work as these projects and their scope unfolds. For me, the acceleration is saving money and getting our kids in better facilities ASAP. And as a board, I'm confident we will do really good work around additional data that comes to us, whether it's the enrollment stuff, the student potential, whether it's the boundary discussions that we have to have, whether it's our goals around equity in our schools, we will do that work, but I don't think staying with the original plan is gonna help us. I actually think accelerating is gonna accelerate our progress on all those other dimensions, boundaries and balance in our schools because we'll be, sorry guys, forced to do the work. And if we commit that our, our vision is to achieve the goals and the balance and the facilities and the equity that we've all been talking about for years and campaigns and et cetera, and spent our careers for you guys doing this stuff, accelerating this work will help us get those other goals faster, I believe it in my heart. And so I'm, 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 I'm coming down on this acceleration plan because I honestly think it's gonna help us accelerate all our other goals. It will take additional time, you're right, but on. But honestly, I think, kind of riffing on some remarks that Ruthina made, I think that as a board, we can get more efficient on things too, making sure we're focusing only on the priority things, making sure our agendas are crafted properly to make sure we're eyes on the prize of the, of the goals that we set in front of ourselves. I think, I think we can get a lot more efficient on making, we can make time for the priority discussions. I actually think accelerating the facilities work is gonna accelerate all our other goals.
Let's ask one question. Before we move on. So if we were to hire more staff, as we talked about, now we come out of the bond funds, that would only be possible with savings from the bond, right? So, or would you be, because if you hired off the bond, would you be taking it with the project?
Well, remember, on last Tuesday night, our bond project fund got $3.5 million more money in it because of how we were able to sell the bonds, which was a really positive thing. So I don't believe that will have to reduce the scope of any project we have in there right now to pay for any additional clerical or project supervision whatsoever in our bond funds.
If I've learned anything from my boss, it's using analogies, because he uses them every sentence he comes up with now. Somebody that I brought up, this is a bunch of dominoes, right? That they kind of need to knock over. And what I'm suggesting is we take out like the sixth domino and knock over the first few. And then in the spring, maybe we can put that domino right back there and knock them all down again. But maybe before we knock them down, we switch a couple in the spring. That's what I'm looking to do, is to commit, but not commit.
Commit with a check-in point. I mean, in, in May or April.
As you said, yeah.
We, obviously, it's a review process and we will come back to it and look at it over and over again. But I think putting in a forced stop, or at least a forced pause, makes us do that sooner than later. I don't, I don't want to get so far down the path that we are looking back and say, oh, we probably should have changed something back there, right? Because that's all that's been done for a long time, is looking back to saying, yeah, we really screwed up back there. How are we gonna fix that? I would really rather start looking at how are we gonna keep moving forward? And I think forcing us to pause, even if it's a short pause, and we look at it again and say, yep, this next three, they look good too. Maybe it'll play out that way.
Especially if by that time we are more efficient and we are doing better work. And then maybe at that time we're like, let's go. The caveat I would add, because I know this other person is important, and frankly, I see the need, you know, I see the need for those two folks, right? That, if we're doing any acceleration, and especially if we're likely to continue to accelerate, I would doubt that we can put that off six more months and keep, you know, that piece, I want to be really cognizant of. And I, I think it's, you're right, we got the extra money, our bond sales are going great, I would hope that we continue on that. I mean, I think the financial trajectory looks very, very good for us. If we start to realize some of these savings with acceleration, it looks even better. You know, as a taxpayer, and I guess this is where I lean anyway, I don't have a problem hiring the people we need to do to get the work done we need to get done. Hey, I think that's frankly important to do. Whether we vote for the full thing, or we just vote for these five projects and come back to it in the spring. That's my two cents on that.
So I just want to make sure the five projects, when you said five projects, the first wave that you identified, it's City High Design, Tate, Alexander, Southeast and North Central.
Correct.
Those are the ones that we need to kick off into the design phase.
That's Dwayne's way of...
So there could be a resolution around approving the acceleration of those five moving to the design phase, hiring the staff who need to grow your capacity with a checkpoint in April, taking into account student potential analysis and any data that we have, and it's a planned pause, I put it that way. We plan to do the work, leading, so it's not a stop, it's, we just build a process that we know we're gonna do this evaluation and analysis and come forward in April time frame with what's our disposition on the next wave of, you know, design activities.
I am hopeful with that report, because looking at it, it does seem to be a bit more inclusive on what it's looking at as far as potential housing units, right? It could sway things quite a bit, right? We're reacting now to Alexander, you know, new brand-new school, portable, something could show up in that report in March, or that's the timeframe when we should get it. Or we're like, whoa, there's another one coming that we should probably look at. Maybe it's not. Maybe we've got really good projections. I doubt they're 100% accurate up to this point, right? That will be more accurate than what we have now, and maybe it'll show us this plan, we just keep on keeping off, and maybe it'll say we should address one or something. I don't know. That's the whole point, I don't know.
So I had one more thought to you, nightmare. That is, you look at Alexander and it's surrounded by cornfields that are about to be developed. So that may or may not show, because I don't know if there's been any interest by developers down there yet, but there certainly are a lot of potential yet to come. We even had discussions a couple of years ago, is that about? We need another site down there. There's a lot of that that may come to you again, potential building sites.
Snatch up some land right by Weatherby Park though, right? Probably not at a good price.
So, that's another thing you can consider too, is where it sits.
What do you guys think? Do you think we've covered this topic? Are there other things people want to get on the table?
I guess I would leave one, one kind of thing, I know I threw out there, you know, maybe we have multiple plans. If we're going to potentially take a vote on the first wave, if as I guess we're calling it that, on Tuesday, I want to be able to say, you know, if it fails, can we then make a motion at that time to pick three, right? I mean, is that option still available to us? Because that was my concern with only having, let's vote on this, as a pass fail, and not having anything to fall back on. This is one reason I suggested having an alternate plan. But if it's the kind of thing where we go pass fail on the first wave, it's the only thing I really feel comfortable with, to be fair to them, is if somebody makes a motion to approve this whole acceleration thing, I'm telling you now, I'm gonna vote no. But if it does fail for the first wave, I would likely want to make a motion to at least accelerate some of it, because I think some of it's worth it. If that's still something we're all okay with doing, then I don't know that we need multiple plans juggling between now and Tuesday.
I'd be in favor of voting on the whole one, if that fails, and then having the plan of phase one. But I understand that's not...
I would just, I agree with you there, because when we discussed the bond, there was a lot of talk of breaking it up. And maybe we would have voted to break it up and never took that shot at all, at least one time. And seeing what the board had to say, we would have missed that opportunity, just my two cents.
The thinking with President Lynch was, is if you give him option two, he'll choose option two, so don't give him a choice.
So you've said that, that these are bookends? So that option is still available? Yeah. So I think, Sean, does that answer your question?
But I guess anything's available as far as city high is concerned.
Finish, please. I mean, honestly, we...
Exactly.
Yeah.
We just, we just have to make sure that it works sequentially.
Right.
What you would choose would work sequentially.
So in other words, we wouldn't say, let's do this, 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 next.
And if, and if any board member has a, a potential option B, please give it to Dwayne and correct before the meeting so they can send it sequentially. Ideally, ideally with Thanksgiving, and I don't plan to work on this issue on Thanksgiving.
Good.
So...
I mean, you're giving us the day off too, that's good.
Remember, you got tomorrow and you've got Monday.
That's right. That's the difference between, I will if you ask. You have to say pound, please, Dwayne.
Sucking up now, are we?
About Friday. Do that.
I like the thought of candid suggestion, personally.
Well, just one last thought. The bookends are there. If you're gonna realize the savings, you need to get them done by that date to realize the savings in the bond and inflation. But if it means flipping a project or two in a year, it doesn't bother me the least, because if you have good reasons for flipping, kerfling, shimmying, then you have good reasons. As long as we don't mess up with that, the transition housing, we're good.
And we have the power to do that.
Absolutely.
That's the flexibility.
Yeah.
Based on new data, conditions changing, et cetera. Yeah.
And I don't get the sense, and I hope we don't, start cherry picking projects at the board table. I think that would just be a disaster. And I'm not hearing it.
No, we would like, if you want us to do a scenario, if you want us to look at something different, just send us that information, we'll run it through, we'll see, we'll see, you know, if the sequence flows, then we'll be able to tell you that. So, you know, just, it's entirely up to you, we're very flexible in that regard.
I had one point that Sean made that I just want to clarify. It's not really six months, it's nine months. Because we would be starting in June and then we might be starting late summer, so if you know, paper looks like six months means that it's nine.
We then move on to the next easy topic, our boundary discussion. Attendance area development discussion. I'm, I look for some guidance on this particular topic. I mean, there's all kinds of discussions around boundaries. We hear from North Lincoln families are concerned around boundaries. We're concerned about boundaries in terms of balancing schools. There's a lot of conversation around, around that. We've been provided, thank you for loading up, the current boundaries that have been projected. But I, I'm understanding there's, there are some boundary decisions that we do need to make in the near term.
Absolutely.
And, and then beyond that, what kind of boundary discussions do we want to put out in front of ourselves? And what's the process, what's the timeline, kind of thing?
So let me do the immediate one for you, which is the attendance area that was assigned to the school in the Scanlon Farms development. So we now know that we're not doing that one, and that the next one that we're doing is up across from South Slope. And so right now, if you look at, I'm just gonna pull it up for you. So if you look at the, I'm gonna just type this in first, we try to not get two things at once. There we go. If you look at the 1920 elementary map, this is the one that is of most urgency right now, and is the one that you've been receiving, the emails on from and other communications from parents in the North Lincoln area. So remember, here's Liberty, and this is the Scanlon Farms Elementary School. What's not on here right now is the school that's gonna go up here across from South Slope. So we have a large swath of this attendance area here. There are very few students that live up here and up here, so most of the emails that you're getting are folks that live in here. They live, if you're driving up to Liberty, they live east as you're driving up to Be Extreme. So what, the request that's been made is, how soon can we find out where we're going to school? So we're really looking at an attendance area process that affects all of the current Penn Elementary School, all of the current Garner Elementary School area, all of what's the current Scanlon Farms Elementary School area, which includes a north part of Lincoln Elementary School and a north part of Wickham Elementary School. So we're really looking at parents and students that live in four elementary attendance areas. And I, we had this discussion last spring, and part of the process of making the decision to move the elementary school construction north, and there was an understanding that we were gonna have to go back through an attendance area development process, probably a little bit more limited in scope than we've done in the past, because in the past it's always been district-wide. Here, we're really confined to those four elementary school populations. And again, it's not even the entirety of Lincoln and Wickham, it is the entirety of Garner and Penn. And so it's the opportunity to sit down with the parents from those four attendance areas and to walk them through a process, not unlike we've done in the past as we've worked through elementary and secondary attendance areas. Part of the conversation that happened last spring was when to do that. And there was an acknowledgement that this shouldn't happen until we go through a new board election. And so we've gone through that process. And when Amy and I talked about it, you know, we looked at the continuity of doing it in one fell swoop, so putting the holidays in between was probably not a best practice from that standpoint. So we knew when the, the new board got elected, we were looking at a January start for it. So that was why we indicated at the last board meeting to put that on a, on your thinking process, on your timeline for a start after the new calendar year. So we would propose that we would be looking at involving parents and community members from those four elementary catchment areas, where we'd walk through a process that's very similar to what we've used in the past at the elementary level, with a plan then to come back prior to spring break and potentially earlier than that. But certainly if we gave it the January to March timeline, that gives us adequate time to make sure that we get it posted, get the meetings held, go back for a second round, and if necessary, a third round, and then be able to come back to the board with a community-supported proposal for changes to the attendance areas.
And you'd like attendance areas for 2019 to be done before the 2000, this is school years out, technically, right?
Yes. And part of the reason, sorry to interrupt, but part of the reason that we do that is because one of the things that we have inside the district and outside the district, outside the district, we have open enrollment. Remember that students open-enrolling from outside the district, open enroll into the district and not into a school. So we reserve the right to assign them to available seats, and they know that that process can come much later. We simply approve their open enrollment as it comes in, if it meets the requirements of the state, and then assignment to be determined at a later date. Voluntary transfer, those folks are requesting to move inside the attendance areas, we prefer to make those assignments first. And so the earlier we know about this, the easier it is for parents inside the district to meet those timelines for the voluntary transfer process. Right now, we have voluntary transfer aligned to open enrollment, so we look at those dates as contemporaneous. So obviously, the earlier we get this done, the smoother it is for parents inside the district when they're looking at it, and for parents from outside the district to understand what those attendance areas look like. Sorry, if you mean to interrupt.
No. And so I know we gotta cover this, and I think some of the things that we all want to talk about may not be able to get done in that time, because it's pretty big scope, I think. So just throwing it out there, there are two areas outside of this that I would like the board to consider in that same timeline. And it's going to be, the two areas that I'm specifically talking about are the Lake Ridge Home Home, which I think in 2019 goes from Twain to Alexander, no, for more kids in Alexander at that time.
It's this area right here?
Yep. And my suggestion, just throwing it out there, is that we actually look at putting those students at Homestead, where I think we'll have some seats there. My other concern is Breckenridge, which Steve could find out.
It's a little bit harder to see, but that's this area right down here.
Those kids currently go to Lemme. They ride a bus there now. At one point, when I was not on the board, those students were going to get moved to either Wood or Alexander, I believe. I did come before the board and asked them to stay at Lemme. The Lemme staff there was honestly in favor of that, because it is a lot of diversity that goes into that school. They love those kids, those kids are part of that community. In 2019, we were looking at moving those students to Hoover, New Hoover. And I think that we should again look at keeping those students at Lemme. If you look at the numbers, the SES numbers and ELL numbers, when that change happens, Hoover opens at, I don't know, 40, 50%, somewhere there. And you're driving them, these numbers down, because they're picking up students from old Hoover. And I don't think that's the direction they want to go. So those are just a couple ideas I'm throwing out there, in addition to the northern ones that I think can be addressed.
So this would be on the same timeframe, this January to March?
Yep.
Same process, the meetings with the, with the families and proposals and meetings? And I'd like to learn a little bit more about just how that process works. Is it, like, so just use the North Lincoln example, you'd have a meeting with the Garner families, Penn families, you know, sort of separately, school-based? And then take that information together and bring proposals? I'm just curious how that all works.
Sure. We actually all meet with them all together.
All together?
So we invite parents, the likelihood is we may meet at different places, just because it's a little more physically accommodating to get to the school that's closest. So it gives us an opportunity to consider Penn and Garner relative close proximity, and maybe Wickham and Lincoln close proximity, and to hold some meetings. and maybe Wickham and Lincoln close proximity, and to hold some meetings at both of those schools, or maybe even all four of those schools, to facilitate that input. We gather input from the parents as they go through that process, understand what their preferences are and what concerns there are. If you remember, one of the things that we went through, I've got to get everything in order, I believe it was the last time around when we did it. We actually asked for some definition of neighborhoods by residence, as opposed to simply by what might be on Johnson County map for the name of a neighborhood, for instance, and to better understand what are the dividing lines between various areas, various neighborhoods within the attendance areas, so that we can better assign, make the assignments in relation to how people sociologically group their neighborhood, how they see that, that fitting together. So we try to gather as much of that information as we can, and then we start looking demographically at the, at the neighborhood, so that we understand how many kindergarteners, first graders, second graders, third graders, et cetera, there are, so that we understand how particular configurations may affect capacity. Then we'll draft out two or three different maps, that to the best of our ability meet as many of the preferences has, have been expressed, and then take those back. And so round two is, take a look at the map, give us the plus and minuses on it, what might need to be changed. Sometimes it's a relatively straightforward process, not a lot of tweaks. People say, I like this and that, if you make these couple of changes, we're good to go. Other times, wholesale change, we've got to come back for a third round, so we can get that input from folks.
And what, how much does our policy to get our FRL to fifty percent drive, drive that?
What we always try to do is we try to make sure that we meet that superintendent direction, which is fifty, twenty, twenty. And where we can, we will certainly bring forward plans that fit that, that directive, and then in light of what the community input is that comes into it.
Because I, you know, I guess I'd like to, because the community input has been thirty years of development. And it's pretty clear that there are pockets of our community that have no interest in this, don't want a part of it, want to remain isolated, but we as a board in a district have said, no, we're not going to do that. Nobody's got elected running on that. You know, in fact, Paul, right, our campaign was essentially about busing kids for balance. And they said, hey, you're the guy. And I'm, you know, I think I tried to articulate it, I'm not at all against desegregating our schools. I didn't like that particular plan at that time, nothing I'm fighting right now. But I feel it's important that we desegregate our schools, and our community's not doing it. And they're not going to on their own. You know, we're not, we're not going to get affordable housing, that's not going to change in, in the near future. We can't force developers to build the houses that the school district might want, right? That's not, but what we can do is assign kids. And I think, you know, Paul, you pointed out a couple of areas that might be, I think where we have opportu, where kids are already being bused, right? That's already an opportunity of busing with minimal cost, right? So there's an opportunity. I think the idea of paired schools is one that is used in a lot of communities. Madison, Wisconsin has a number of paired schools, right? So where we have geographical opportunities to do this, and that's where I'm anticipating some community members saying, heck, no. And I'm willing to stand up and say, well, heck, yes. And if you don't like it, vote me out, that's fine, find somebody else to do this job. But I think, I know that's where I'm at, is I'd like to see some bold changes to get, because the kids at Alexander, they will not get another chance at third grade this year. And their education is different than the education at Schimmick, that is inequitable, and it has nothing to do with their facilities, right? It's, it is a different job to teach at Schimmick or at Lincoln, right, than it is at Alexander or at Twain. And I just think, you know, the likelihood of us coming up with, to handle this from the staffing angle, from RAM alone? I mean, we know, I mean Craig, you know better than anybody, that RAM is a short-term, that is not a permanent fix. I don't think anybody imagines that could be a permanent solution. We're not going to get that kind of funding from the state, especially if we see what's happening in our economy, as FRL is just growing overall. So now that we have this RAM model in place, you know, we're going to start to see schools ten, twenty years down the road, unless there's a major shift in our economy that hasn't happened for a couple of decades. We may have twelve, fifteen, twenty RAM schools, and then what are we going to do? Can we really afford that staffing? And so some of this, you know, so I guess I'd like to see some, some bold movements in that direction, that's really...
And where we really struggle is in this area here, if you think about east of, of 218 and, and south of, of six. Because if you look at that, we've got Hills, we've got Alexander, we've got Twain, we've got Wood, oops, don't touch the screen, we've got Wood, and we've got Lucas. And those are five of the eight highest-need schools in the district right now, are all clustered side by side. So in those five areas, it's very difficult to make any adjustments internally within that contiguous area to those attendance areas that will cause any significant change in the demographics of any one of those five schools. So we know that. We've got a little bit more flexibility in some of the areas of the district, in kind of this area here, to draw lines that make contiguous attendance areas that may have better balance. Because there is some, a lower socioeconomic status contiguous to some higher socioeconomic status. So we've got some ability to do that. You know, we did that a little bit here, when you look at Weber and you think about Pheasant Bridge, not quite contiguous, but geographically proximate. And so there is some ability to do some of that, but down here, we really struggle. And so if, if you want these schools to look like the superintendent directions, then you can't just simply rearrange the deck chairs on the Titanic, right? That's not going to make a change in those five attendance areas, something different has to be done. Up here, a little bit more flexibility. You know, I don't know what it might look like when we get parent preference. I don't know what kind of parent preference issues we get to come in through here. But we've got a little bit more ability, because at least there are some low socioeconomic status students here. But I will tell you that in the last five years, the Penn attendance area has seen a ten percent reduction in their free-to-use lunch rate when we do our Title I counts. So, and again, that is a municipal issue, not a school institution. Offer that up as food for thought.
So there, I, I looked up today, there's four buses going into Alexander from four different areas. So, you know, kids already on a bus today going to Alexander. Yes, they're within two miles, it's a tenant support busing. So we could potentially send those buses to other schools, similar to what's being done with Pheasant Bridge. I feel like we have options.
And I think Paul's right, that we should be looking at growing globally, and not just the north end. And I, I want to have specific questions here about the north end, because we knew all along that the boundaries we have for that are absolutely worthless, because it's for a school that doesn't exist. So it has to be done, everything else should be done. So my question, first question is, as far as, do we have a, a product number of kids that currently are going to Lincoln that would, in this map, are going to the...
I don't have that number off the top of my head, I know we do have those numbers.
And that's been a recurring theme from those parents, that, you know, they're going to Lincoln this year, next year they're transitional, and then the next year, maybe they're going, God knows where, so three schools in three years. So the question has arisen, if we decide what school they're going to, is there availability for them to open enroll next year to that school, so it's two schools instead of three schools? And I know that's a big space issue, and that's why I want to know what that number is. Because if it's a hundred kids, that's problematic, if it's ten, that's...
Two things to keep in mind. One is changing buildings, and one is changing peers. So if you think about that, next year, they don't change peers, because they travel with their peer group. And then they change peers the next year. So they have two changes in peer groups, technically, yes, three changes in buildings, because the entire school moves. So it's three building changes and two peer group changes. Moving next year would be a seats-available basis, so they go through the voluntary transfer process. We literally look at it, grade level by grade level, building by building. They could actually have three groups of peers that way with two buildings, because they could be at Lincoln this year, they could be at, pick a school, Garner next year, with that peer group, and then that peer group could change. So, so...
We are going to get those requests from parents?
Yep, we will.
Right, because we've already been asked whether that's going to be an option. So I guess as we look at what school we're going to send those kids to,
Yep.
you know, between January and March, look at the numbers at all around and say,
And that's, that's why we would...
Well, that's not going to work if we do this.
Right.
Or it'll totally work if we do this. I think that'll be important information to have when we start looking at that.
Yeah. And that's why we'd really like to have this done by spring break, because when parents apply for that voluntary transfer, we want to know if you are currently North Lincoln and you're going to be zoned to Garner, are there seats available for you at Garner? Are there seats available for you at Penn? If you're assigned to the new elementary school, that's not going to work, because it's not going to be built yet. So we want to be able to tell them where they're going. So if they're interested, they've got that opportunity to apply for voluntary transfer.
My, I guess we've got a feeling on it is knowing what Garner was like now, and what Penn was like now, and, you know, all of those schools, what they're going to look like next year is very simple, what it looks like this year. There isn't going to be...
Not a lot of space.
Without that other school opening, I don't know that there will be space for any of them to go to.
No, it really winds up being a, a school-by-school, grade-by-grade, individual decision based on where your students are at, and where there may be some, some seats available.
I, I mean, I, as we start to look globally at some of the, you know, other attendance zones, which I think we totally need to do, while I, I understand the thought process of, when we're looking at the four north side attendance zones and shifting them within that sphere, I think we should at least entertain the option that we're going to include more than those four, for some of those kids. And then, once you start doing that, again, dominoes. So we've got a, we've got a lot of moving targets, as Phil said, to, to look at. I don't, I don't relish this in being a really simple thing, that we're going to just be like, oh, yeah, we'll just change that boundary, that'll be the new school instead of the other one. Because I, I don't think that boundary works for that space, if I, first of all.
So to answer your question, information that Steve provided is, in March 2016, there are 124 elementary students in the North Lincoln, North Lincoln Island, so north of the...
That are currently in Lincoln that would be going to...
The Scanlon Grant.
So that's a, that's a big chunk of kids. That's going to be impactful.
Now, like Steve said, though, they can be broken into sections, too. I mean, there's some that are much further north than others, so it doesn't have to be, I think, all or nothing.
True, I just think that it has the potential of some of them making sense to be at Lincoln still. But then we put other kids into Lincoln and it's false, so... I don't, I, I like the, the balance that is created with some of these, particularly like at Lincoln, with this boundary, that's a good thing. I'd be, nearly destroy that. It's at the same time, there's a lot of kids to try and find places for them, make the most sense, right? They're closest to, what, Wickham probably, geographically at that point?
There's a number of it, Lincoln.
Exactly.
Yeah. The place that is in, is, is New Hoover, so it would require shifting. It's, I don't think it's as simple as just taking a group and putting them someplace that would require...
You'd probably have to divide them, I mean, logistically, right, you'd have to divide them up. You can't fit 120 kids at any school, right, in that area.
No.
Correct?
No, we don't have, we don't have enough room to accommodate most of those kids.
Right. So if they're not going to go to the New Hoover for that time, they have to be, they'd have to be split up from their peers. Because we have no capacity to do anything.
And I think that's a whole separate issue, whether or not, what they can do next year.
Okay.
Because I think it's going to be complicated to draw those boundaries for 2019. That's going to get kids into all the schools in there, because we will have another school at that point.
Yeah.
But still trying to figure out where they're going, because 125 kids in the North Lincoln area, I don't think are going to the South Slope school. That, no, that, that makes no sense, right? When you're pulling kids out of Penn that are going to go up there, I don't know how many kids that is, but that's going to be a significant number, right?
Right, we get the Garner island that's up there.
I, I mean, I think it makes immediate, short-term, obviously, this has to be done. And I think if we can include a couple pocket areas to get some immediate relief, you know, I, I'm for that, I'm having that discussion. I think that we, what we need to have is a, a long-term discussion. I mean, we did redistributing in '09. They brought together lots, you know, broad, truly broad-based communities, right, all the communities. And what I wanted after that was for that committee to at least stay together and meet, say, annually, to just look at these things, because they already did all the work. They were community members who did, understood the maps, knew the, knew what our priorities were as a board, knew how FRL played into that, and then you got input from realtors and the mayors and community, nonprofit agencies. And if that group had stayed together, we would have this huge institutional memory that helps us in these processes moving forward, they remember what was said. And obviously, it's not going to remain cohesive with thirty-eight people or whatever. But I think that this is not a discussion that we can just have once every five years. I think that's the problem, is we never had it for twenty years. And now we're sort of doing it in these fits and starts, but the underlying problems are, we live in the society we live in, and people buy the houses they do where they do, and that's out of our control. But I think having our finger on the pulse as much as we can, because the truth is, you know, there are definitely people in this community who would be scared to send their child to my daughter's school, right? And that my daughter's school is a different place than their kid's school, but it's not a bad place, right? The population makes some things challenging, that we're not, frankly, they're not going to overcome with a RAM twice as aggressive as what we have. Sometimes it doesn't matter how many adults you have in the room. If you've got ten kids out of twenty-four who are coming with a whole lot of issues, there's only so much you can do. And I know we had the discussion at the board table about our subs. Yes, education falls off when there's a sub, that's why we hire good teachers, right? So the education goes down when there's a sub. Well, when there's no sub, or they're just miss music, or they're just miss PE, like, that's, I'm, I can't accept it. I just can't accept it. You know, and then we'll say, well, yeah, we, because the truth is, we're always going to have stuff on our plate right now that has to be done. And this is the extra stuff that we're going to have to do, in my opinion, on top of all of this, that I'd like to do, and I'd like to have the energy to do. And I know it's taking on, like, all of society that we live in. I mean, this is, these are big fundamental issues. But we can do some things as this district that make it better for those kids now and next year, educational sense. You know, whether, you know, I know people get really humbled, I want to know where I'm going to go to school. I want to make sure every kid gets to go to a school that they get good education. And frankly, whether it's this school or that school, I would like that to be not that big of a deal. You know, it's this school or it's that school, because we're burning out staff, kids are getting an inequitable education all across our district, and I, I'd like to change it. That's why I ran for the school board.
Just we, we are, I think it was at the dinner, the U E M dinner, those of us that were there, I think it was Jamie Volmer, that said, you know, we're, you guys can correct me if I am saying this wrong, our country is a melting pot, but we become a melting pot where we don't want to melt anymore. So I'm all for it, we're ready to take that on. I've been there, I'm still ready to go there, so...
I, I think we should, but I, I think we should address the immediate needs that were first put out, and because if we can get the North Lincoln, and then these other two areas, Paul, that you mentioned, Lake Ridge and Breckenridge, kind of our first wave between January and March, and then what's next? You know, I mean, to your point, this isn't a one and done, this is an ongoing set of activities, and we build up the expertise, because we're digging in and getting it, and build it momentum. It's our backlog, and we just work our way through it, you know? And we could even say, what's, what's next after this first wave of work? Is it the, the, the five, you know, on the southeast side or whatever, paired schools? I mean, we could, we could choose the priority. But that, I think that feels like the next step. And, and so, help me, for the next board meeting, do we need to have an item on this saying, we're going to take on these boundary discussions in this timeframe? Do we have a discussion item at the next meeting on this?
Yeah, because I think that one of the things that we'll need to do, because I really think that the Breckenridge and Lake Ridge discussion is that first step in that next part of the process, because it goes back to that fundamental question we had. I remember sitting around those, those tables with the community members and talking about, what are the role of islands, and do we have them, do we not have them? And there were some pretty strong sentiments about that. And, and the direction at the time was to eliminate islands. And so we tried to say, okay, if you eliminate the islands, where can you best connect those islands to a contiguous school district that makes the most sense? And so that's why you see the map that you have behind you, knowing that there were some pros and cons to that process. And so we're going to be reopening that door to reengage that, that conversation. to reengage that, that conversation. So I think that there is a far greater likelihood of coming up with a resolution to how to populate the new Christine Grant Elementary School or the new South Slope School up there than there is to get an immediate response on what happens with Breckenridge and Lakewood Ridge. Cause that will, to use your earlier analogy, start tipping dominos as you go through there. But, if you don't start that conversation somewhere, you won't start it anywhere, right? So you have to have that, that initial conversation somewhere. So I think as a board, you should recognize that you may start two conversations and get one answer and get one set of what-ifs, because it may raise some additional questions that don't allow for an immediate resolution to it. So I think we just need to be prepared for that as we go through it. Uh, when you look at the timeline for when we'll get our, uh, our build-out analysis and then our timeline for getting the next set of, of demographics, those are likely to come in after the conversation starts. So if we think about, you know, how we merge that data, because I think we'll have some people in the community that are gonna say, wait a minute, I totally understand where you're going, but I wanna know this stuff first. And I don't wanna hit that, um, paralysis, analysis paralysis that you talked about before. But at the same time, you know, if we don't start the conversation, at some point in time, we've gotta be prepared to merge that information as we go through it. So I think we just need to recognize that we've got multiple lanes on that freeway and we can drive down two of them simultaneously, but we might come to a resolution more quickly on one and the other one might take a little bit more time. Good or bad, we might have a little bit more time. I think you used the sense of the imperative or the urgent there. We gotta get this one done. This one, we've got a little bit more time with. The, the caution with that is because there's a little bit more time here, you don't wanna get to the point where you never make a decision. But I think there's an opportunity to get both of those started. I think at the board table, which was your next question, what do you need to ask us to do?
Yeah.
You need to ask us to put together a process.
Got it.
Uh, to get the, uh, the South Slope attendance area rolling. And you need to ask us to put together a process that starts to look at what do we do in order to meet Superintendent Direction three J five? Because that's really the question that you're asking, right?
Mm-hmm.
Because when you look at, at this chart and you say, how many schools are above twenty percent E L L? How many students, how many schools are above fifty percent low socioeconomic status? Then you start to get into that challenge of, okay, you can't simply solve that by moving this line here or there. It's not gonna work. So what then are our other options and how would we address those?
Good. So we'll have this item on the twenty-eighth agenda, uh, update on the attendance, um, area and we'll come hopefully and ask for a process for South Slope and then a process for meeting for superintendent goal. I forget the number. What was it? C J three?
It's Superintendent Direction three J five.
Three J five. Got it.
I just, the reason I threw those two out is cause if we are gonna talk about that, I just want that to be public knowledge. There are a couple of zones that may be discussed.
Are we ready for the next topic? Hold on, I need to go on reading agenda. Next is Education Committee. And this was a discussion around getting the committee up and going for rebooting it. And it's a committee as a whole. Remind me whose chair? Is it you?
We haven't, we're gonna wait till we know.
We elect the chair, but Tom was, uh, Tom Gates was chair of the Ed Committee when it got reconstituted. I thought it was very effective. I just wanted it better to meet that you mean it because we go to the different schools and discussions. Many times pertaining to an issue that was pertinent to that school, that type of money. It's kinda like a work session, but it's more, we're getting in the weeds. We, we had him on the Avid program. We had him on awaited resource.
Summer school.
Different.
Alright, pre-K?
Pre-K, yes.
A long-term session on pre-K.
So it's, and we had a career technical over at Northwest.
When do they typically meet?
They, another month.
Uh, well, we were meeting once a month, then we went to once a quarter.
Right.
And, uh, we had to try to meet around the other board and committee meetings. And so we always struggled with that.
Always struggled to find it at consistent time. Okay.
I thought for a while it was like.
We tried to do third Monday. We tried to do third Monday in the middle of the quarter. Or third Monday, third Tuesday in the middle of the quarter.
Yeah.
So that was always the try.
So it was regular cadence of once a month? I don't, I don't, it feels like maybe we need to have the committee meet and discuss frequency, vote a chair.
And maybe as you come into that one, knowing the topics that you'd be interested in, either sending those in ahead of time so we could compile a list for you, or bringing them to that meeting, so we can get that process started then.
I think it's just like policy and governance. We just need to schedule a meeting and then we decide.
And then we can start.
So. And policy and governance is first Tuesday of the month?
Yes, no less of that.
So we usually.
Thursday, Tuesday of the month is the way to go. I told my wife when I start this process, they'll count me being there in two days.
That's a good call.
You love on them.
Thursday, Tuesday's open.
So we could, I mean, we could do a work session after the twenty-eighth and, but call it Education Committee and have that be your first meeting?
Well, if you do that, you have, we have to invite all the other people that are on that committee to be there.
Oh, that's right. It's more than us. I forgot. It's, yeah, there's teachers and others, yes. Um, so if it's not the twenty-eighth.
The third, yeah, I don't know. I mean, the third Tuesday in December is the nineteenth, but that, that's too far out.
But isn't that also like, right?
Uh, probably for the people who have that.
I don't have that. It's not wrong for me.
What?
It's the week.
Prior to the school.
Yeah.
Correct.
School's still in session. Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Schools in session through that Friday.
So the twenty-eighth is a no. Um, this, the next Tuesday is already policy and governance, right?
Right.
And then the twelfth is a board meeting. Well, we could, we could do it, a work session on, and that gives us enough lead time to invite the others, but.
The only thing that I.
It's late for policy and.
If you have them after a board meeting, you're not guaranteed that you're gonna have that meeting if we're stopping at ten. And then those people have to stick around all the time.
Yeah, so maybe it's before. Maybe it's before the board meeting.
And you, but, like Phil said, I think the, one of the great things about that meeting was that we had it at the school.
Ah.
And you were able to go to that school. And usually there was a presentation from that school's staff on something.
I see.
We went to Twain after it got its renovation. So you had a chance to get the presentation there and walk around and see it. And it also gets us out of here. It's kind of a.
Yeah, gets us out.
Different change, think a little differently. It's not the normal routine of that. So I, and I like that. I thought that that was very helpful.
I'm, I'm a firm believer in if you're gonna set it to be, you know, the third Tuesday or whatever, do it and stick with it. And then people know that it's there. It'll be easier to get the other folks in. And I'm okay with waiting until the nineteenth.
And December nineteenth is not, I mean, it's a month.
It gives us time to figure out where we're gonna go and make sure all the other folks that should come, get there and get the topics done. And then I, I honestly, I think we should be meeting monthly now for sure. And that might go for a while and before it pairs down to quarterly. Cause I think that's something we should.
Yeah, when we cover things and go.
Yeah. So Education Committee, December nineteenth, is that usual? Well, we'll need to figure out a location and get invitations out to the other participants.
I'm just, I'm just gonna throw out a suggestion, um, for a topic. I know Southeast started a, a new program this year. I believe it's called Castle.
Castle.
For a school inside the school. It will be at the end of, of what, six months of it running. Is it a possibility to maybe have that as our first educational topic? We do it out there, give some update on how that's going. Um, and where we see that heading for our district.
And it's also, that program is held in one of those templates. So if you haven't been in a template.
Oh, see, he's doing that template. That's a great idea.
But I was, I was gonna bring that up too, as well, the castle and the.
Okay, better than what I.
So you, you guys will handle the invitations to the other participants and arranging with Michelle, if we're gonna go to Southeast. Okay.
What time?
Yeah, what, five-thirty?
Well, again, that was, I think we did it earlier because staff stood.
Right. It, it, it's a type of thing we have.
Like four-thirty?
We actually started them at four.
Yeah, was that?
Yeah. Now, there are, I would say four-thirty now with the new secondary finish time.
Four-thirty and then what? It's gonna run to five or six? Five-thirty, six?
Six.
Did it run to six?
Four-thirty to six. Cool.
Yeah, exactly.
Awesome. Okay, next item, legal counsel update. You sent some materials out.
I did. Uh, so here's what I found out. Not a lot of answers. Uh, so I talked to the folks at I A S B. Uh, you see the list of questions I asked? Do you have a job description for a school attorney? No. Do you have a set of expectations for a school attorney? No. Do you have sample goals for a school attorney? No. Do you have an evaluation system for reviewing a school attorney? No. Do you have an evaluation transition process for replacing a school attorney? No. Uh, I did get from them two former documents that are no longer part of their handouts or available resources. Um, you'll see that, uh, the first one is titled An Attorney R F P. Uh, and this, they pulled out of their archives. Uh, it is not dated. Uh, so, uh, the woman who is now in charge of that, uh, area of I A S B was not there uh, when this was removed from their resource list. So she actually was unable to give me a date for that. The second one is a checklist and policies for selecting a school attorney. Uh, and again, if you scroll through that, undated, also something she was unable to provide context for. Other than these were two documents that she found in the I A S B archives.
These are actually not bad. I mean, in general, what are they working on and?
Yep.
Do we have any comparisons of like what we're spending on legal fees as compared to other districts?
Uh, we have the legal fee summary for our district. We don't have legal fee summaries for other districts.
We can't, is that something we can get?
We could ask them.
Maybe U E N, just so we get.
Schools of our size, I don't just talk to the smaller school district.
Yeah, we can, we can put that out through the U E N.
So, we need to close the loop with Mr. Holland, um, and go through what we said would be an evaluation of work that, um, he's done. Expectations going forward. I know there was also some discussion around potential transition or succession planning and what are we gonna do knowing that he's likely to be retiring at some point in relatively near future. Um, from a process perspective, um, how do we wanna have that evaluation with, with Joe? Is that a full board discussion with him? Is it? I'm just, you know, I've never done this before, looking for insight. Is it, is. Full board feels heavy, but it could be, that's the proper thing to do from a transparency perspective when we have a closed session and, and have a discussion around our expectations and that kind of thing.
You can certainly do it that way.
Um, just to ensure that questions and concerns from the full board are being discussed in, in that manner. I, I don't know how it could be partial.
So that would be a closed session that we would wanna schedule in the preceding, um, what, either the twenty-eighth or the twelfth board meeting?
I think either one of those would be appropriate.
But more, more, why? I didn't.
The evaluation, what that looks like. I think that's where we struggled for a while on exactly what that discussion will entail.
Yeah, that's, I'm trying, I've been kinda wrestling with this, like evaluating versus kinda reviewing. I mean, it's not our employee, right? So it's not like we evaluate a teacher or a principal even. Um, I mean, do we evaluate our contractors?
Oh gosh, yes. Uh, we do. Sorry.
Do we? I mean, as, as the board does it though.
But not, but you're, I, and I agree with you. It's, it's like the thing, we're not required to evaluate.
So I'm just.
You can. And I, and I, and I like the idea more of a review than, than that. And that gives us then our flexibility to build in and, and just review.
Cause it's not, it's also not the only attorney. I mean, we have different attorneys doing different work on different areas of expertise. I think it'd be nice to have a, you know, a sense of how, you know, I, I actually do like these documents. It's like a starting place to say, oh, this is what a lawyer does for the district. Um, you know, I, I do think full board would be good. I'd like that to be closed session, just to have a little more, ask Joe more, cause he, I know he said when he was coming to the board, you know, maybe an open session would be good. Maybe he wants some things aired out there. I'd personally rather uh, kinda keep that in closed session and have a, I feel more frank conversation about kinda, you know, what we're looking for. Uh, especially for new board members coming in. I mean, we have like zero, you know, no interactions except, you know, the, kinda that initial.
So it's a review of work to date, expectations going forward, um, maybe. I mean, he's, he's already been retained. I mean, there's, right, we voted on that, that first meeting. Um, so what we did say, we wanted to have this discussion with him. He said he'd never had a review. And maybe this could be a short, it doesn't have to be a lengthy conversation, but an opportunity for all of us to have a conversation, confirm what he's doing for us, ask questions, talk about what might be coming next.
Might also be an opportunity for you to set up, when you talk about expectations, is there a review schedule? Will you meet every six months? Will you meet every year? What, what is your expectation for when you continue it? If it's a, if it's a conversation?
Yeah.
If, if that's part of the process, then when is the next time that you meet with him to have that next step in the conversation? You know, again, is it?
Yeah.
Is it a year? Is it six months? Is it three months? You may have to have that conversation collectively as a board when you're in closed session. But I think that's something else you might wanna think about putting on the, the, the table when you're with him, is, is when will you have the next installment of this conversation?
And it, that to me sounds like something that we could do in an hour before a board meeting. I mean, if we had any.
I think you could.
We can just come out.
I think that's right.
Is that something that really falls under purview of a closed session?
It would. Yep.
I mean, it's a review of what he's doing. I mean, he's not our employee to.
It's essentially his choice, honestly. And he could choose to do it in an open session. It's.
Right. It's, it winds up being Joe's choice. I did ask him. Um, I've not heard back from him yet.
I mean, I, trust me, I, I agree with J P. I prefer to do it in closed session to at least have more frank and honest conversation. I just wanna make sure we're not just deciding when I do it in closed session. It turns out like it's not really something.
The only reason, feel I, reason I feel relatively confident about it was when he was at the podium, uh, addressing you a couple of board meetings ago. He specified either open or closed at that meeting. So that's why I think both of those are open to you. I defer to him on that, but I know he had suggested either one of those as an option when he was at the podium.
And I'm fine with that. I think, uh, calling it the.
I don't think he expressed a preference though, so that's what I don't know.
The review, I, I think it was, to me, you know, I'm not gonna put words in anybody else's mouth. I open to the extent of the sheer number of things that, uh, he or his firm has a hand in. Cause it seemed like an awful lot.
Right.
And I think there, you know, there was at that time, this sort of, maybe going back to, we talked about this, an all or nothing kind of approach to it. And I think if we really look at it and look at all of those things that he does and says, you know what? He does these fifty things really, really well. That's great. Right? You don't have to necessarily change any of that. If it's like, that's one thing over here, I think maybe we can find other counsel that would do better on that. We can start that process. But I, I really do think the review part's important. But you still need to have a plan. Because we already discussed if we went all or nothing, how hard it would be for us to move forward as a district. And if we kept him on until he was ready to retire, that still comes up, how hard it will be for us to transition. So I think at the very least, we have, need to have a real high-level plan of, you know, Joe or his firm has to handle all of the stuff they're currently working on and any new things goes to our new, like, whatever that process is, still needs to be defined. Maybe that doesn't have to happen at this closed session, but it needs to happen sooner than later. Or at some point, we're gonna.
Well, you can keep doing.
I have to leave representation for all of these various things that would be.
Probably a good person to help define some of that. Like who, who is good at X, Y, Z? You know, who can handle? Cause it's also, there may be lawyers out there that do it, but we're big districts. So who's got the capacity to handle a district of our size? And if, I mean, talking about local labor, I mean, Alers and Cooney, as competent as they are, they will bill as soon as they leave the office. The whole drive here and back.
All lawyers do that.
Yeah, but Joe's office is a lot closer, is my point. I'm not faulting them for doing that. I'm just saying, you know, there's another four hours of billable time.
And I get a little charge to places.
Yeah.
So we, you know, so I'm just being cognizant of that, you know, who, and Joe can probably help lead, help steer us in directions and, uh, frankly, you know, there's aren't a lot of lawyers out there that do this. Even pieces of what we're, school law, let alone special ed, let alone real estate, let alone, more than probably do real estate in general. But it's, it's a specialty field.
So we're gonna wait for input from Joe on closed open, um, and schedule either before the twenty-eighth or the twelfth?
Do you have a preference? I could certainly ask him availability.
Do y'all have a preference? I'm all about closing this ticket if we can, so I, I'd vote for the 28th, but, um, if Joe's available.
All right.
What do you guys think?
I think it's up to him to know the...
Yeah, if he's available on the 28th, I'll get it, uh, I'll work with Kim, we'll get that posted.
Yeah.
November 5, 50th.
That's November 20th.
Yeah. But again, he's local, so maybe you need to be 5:50.
The need, the need is...
We'll ask him. Let's ask him.
Well, just ask him.
Just ask.
Just ask. If not, well...
We have an alternative.
I think he'd like to close the door, too, so I think, uh, if he's around, I'm pretty sure we'll be able to make that meeting.
Okay, thank you very much. Process and timeline for budgeting. It's our last item for the evening.
I almost threw something in when we were talking about, uh, the attendance area, cause all four of you at some point said parent schools during that conversation.
I know.
Yeah, you, you said it, not less, I wanna do it, but the words came out of all four of your mouths. I was keeping track. As a big picture...
Yeah, that's right.
Lori and I had to have a conversation about looking at that, if we're going to decide that that's something we'd wanna do as a school district, we need to be planning for that way ahead of time as far as finances, right? And I think that dovetails into this very nicely, and I don't know that, uh, nine months from now, we're gonna have parent schools, but that, that's the kinda stuff that I think, JP said, the extra stuff on top of all the stuff we need to do is a big picture item that, and I'm just picking that out as, as I think, there are plenty of other big picture items that impact this budgeting process. And I think that's where the board would like to see more involvement in the, the assumption part of the process to say, hey, we're looking at this in the near future, or our future, or whatever it is, um, and then how it goes hand in hand. Obviously, we're looking at, you know, tax rates and things like that, and how much money we're gonna get in, those are assumptions that are sort of separate from that conversation, but I think it all comes into play, so, uh, our whole discussion tonight, I think, is coming to a circle. Mostly I was bam, gonna give Craig time to get his stuff up.
Transition.
All right, I, I asked Leslie to join me so that he could fill in all the gaps. Of course, Leslie, not only is our treasurer, but he's our, uh, Director of Budget and Finance, and, uh, wanted to go over a couple of, uh, documents with you. Hopefully, this is a, a high level conversation made more refined as we go through. Um, I did number the documents for you, uh, in the order, I intend to go through them, and so hopefully that'll be beneficial. But I wanted to start, first of all, on where I believe you and the superintendent have an opportunity to really have input into the budgeting process, and that's simply with the financial planning that is a part of the superintendent directions. And, uh, as the superintendent direction says, that all the financing, all the, all the financing of all of our programs will be in, in, uh, focus or in support of the things that you determine to be our goals, right? And so, as we prepare the budget, uh, we go through these, uh, processes, and, um, down here where it gets a little bit more refined as to the balances that we have to have on hand and those kinda things, uh, we're actually sitting pretty good in all of those areas. And so, um, I feel really good about, uh, the superintendent directions, um, your superintendent linkage to board end, uh, the ends policies and things like that. And then, of course, we don't have our seventeen, eighteen goals, uh, available yet from the board, and I know that you have a plan to work on those, uh, but, um, uh, as I go through the calendar, you'll see where that fits, but these are the sixteen, seventeen goals. And, uh, so we start with the superintendent directions and go through the linkages, the ends policies, and then, and into, uh, uh, they all, uh, kinda coalesce around, uh, around your board goals. So, I wanted to start with that process, and then I wanted to talk about the budget calendar. I brought this budget calendar with me in 2012. We've been using it, uh, in the district since that time, and, uh, it's just really, uh, pretty simple as we just lay it out by month in some of the high level areas. First of all, our fiscal year begins in July, uh, ends June 30th. We close all of our accounts by August 31st. We have to have that, um, sixty day window of preparation. And then, uh, in September, we start our real work. We determine the appropriations for all of our, um, revenue and expenditures. We open up the new accounts in our ledgers. We put all the building budgets in. We do all of that, uh, work during that time. Uh, we reconcile everything in our budget with HR and what HR's been, uh, up to as far as hiring people and making sure all that pieces are put together. And, uh, we do our, our, our collection of data from our buildings for next year's budgeting cycle. Now, that looks different since we have the facility master plan in place. We don't do as much of this as we used to, um, now, because the facility master plan is, is pretty lockstep, and we also, uh, implemented three years ago, the physical plant and equipment lifecycle funds, and that is taking care of a lot of principal issues out there in their buildings. When they know, uh, when their new playground's gonna show up, when they, they know when, uh, their sidewalk's getting taken care of, when they know when they have money to buy classroom furniture. All those pieces of the building lifecycle that we put into place three years ago has really diminished, uh, what I would call, uh, the, the information that comes from the buildings, um, just those onesie, twosie types of things that come in from the building principals, and, and we accommodate that and incorporate it into the budgeting process. And then in October, um, we get down to the work of our certified enrollment. Pitcher Day is, of course, October 1. Uh, we review the financial position with you. If you remember, our first meeting in October, uh, we covered the financial health report. Uh, we covered the CAR. We provided you with a quarterly, uh, um, financial report. All of those things are meant to, um, help you understand how we close the year, where we are financially, and, uh, that kinda gives you that big picture. Um, and then we upstart updating our projection model. It's actually a ten-year projection model, uh, now, um, I expanded that out. Even though the last five years get a little flaky, they're still valuable, um, but, uh, Moody's like that, and they thought that was great. But anyway, um, we do invest a lot of time and effort into our projection model, uh, trying to make it as accurate as possible, and we really refine that over the years. Um, Leslie's really proud when we get, uh, to ninety-nine point to eight percent accuracy, or whatever you ended up with this year, so...
It's pretty good.
That's, that's pretty good.
A little bit good, yeah.
Yeah. Um, and then in November, where we are now, uh, we, the calendar provides an opportunity for the superintendent and the board, uh, to provide goals for, uh, the budget, for the programming for the upcoming year and those kinda things. We have our initial staffing discussions as an admin team, and we start brainstorming program and service changes. I just got an email from, uh, Diane, and, uh, by the way, she's been a fabulous addition to, uh, our curriculum staff. She's just, uh, just really has a great handle on all the, all the programming curriculum that we offer, and, uh, she's constantly wanting to tweak that, and so, we, uh, we start working with those ideas for the upcoming year. In December, uh, we start preparing our costing models for all of our bargaining units. And, uh, you know that our, uh, chapter twenty changed this year, however, our bargaining units, uh, did recertify, so we'll be bargaining this year, and Jane can go into more detail with you, uh, but we'll be bargaining with our nutrition...
With you in December.
Uh, and our nutrition and who?
Physical plan.
And secretaries.
Assistant secretary.
Right, uh, for this, this year. And so, uh, Leslie puts together all of our costing models for, uh, what, uh, that process will entail, and, uh, we start doing that, uh, planning in January. And then we start reestimating revenue based on legislative action. You remember, um, we don't get to really say how much money we get each year, we just respond to what the legislators give us, right? And so, uh, we start making these projections, and we revise those every time the next demo register article comes out, uh, that we're going to get more or less, right? And so, that's the process we use. And then we start doing our certified budget in February, uh, making all of our preliminary staffing additions and reductions at that point in time. We project out what our textbook, uh, needs are, et cetera. And then, as we get into March, uh, we start getting laid into the, the certified budget process, but we review our, uh, all of our staffing adjustments one more time, and we hold our hearing, uh, that were required for certified budget, and then we actually certify our budget by April fifteenth, and you're involved in, in that process, uh, along the way. Um, we work with building principals to determine their line item budget. Of course, uh, please understand that we don't have site-based budgeting here. Uh, we, uh, don't give them control over staffing decisions. Uh, that's all made at, uh, uh, this level, and, uh, if we were to go to, um, a site-based budgeting model, it would take literally years of in-service to bring people along to that point in time where they knew how to do that, right? Um, and, and some districts do, uh, but this district has traditionally not done that. That's the system that we currently have in place, and so, we work with them, uh, for those pieces of the budget that they do have, and that's primaries, primarily supplies and equipment and, and that kinda thing. And then in May, uh, we do our update and our reestimates, uh, based on what we know to be true, and, uh, we hold a hearing to amend the budget if necessary, and then we close out the fiscal year, so. Uh, that's the process we follow each and every year. All right, now to some other goodies. Um, this is kinda small, but it, uh, it is instructive, and, uh, let me, let me open up, uh, the live spreadsheet, because I think it's a little bit easier to read. I took, Director Hemingway said, can, can we compare with other districts, and I, and that, and that is an important thing to do, it, it really is. And so, um, what I did was, I took all the school districts in the state of Iowa and, uh, boiled down their expenditures for the 2016 dataset, it was the only one available to me, and put 'em in these categories of expenditures, and then confined that to our urban eight schools. And what you see up here is the standard deviation from the mean, okay? So, for instance, um, uh, salaries paid to paraprofessionals, the first one on the list, you can go over to Iowa City, and you can see, uh, that we're almost, um, one, uh, point below, uh, the mean, uh, on that. So, we, our costs are below the average for all schools in the state, uh, state of Iowa. That's why it's green. That's good, right? When you, when you spend less money on something, uh, that's, uh, that's a good thing. Dubuque is over two standard deviations above the mean, when you talk about paraprofessionals. They spend six hundred and seventy-three dollars per student. Um, that's, uh, quite a bit when you stay, when you take a look at, uh, what's going on here. Um, and, uh, paid officials and administrative personnel. If you go over to Iowa City, you can see that our costs are, again, nearly, uh, one standard deviation below the mean. So, what we're spending on administration is, uh, one standard deviation less than they, than all Iowa schools. You can go over to Waterloo and see that they're, uh, approaching, uh, nearly two standard deviations above the mean, which means that there's a lot of expense going into administration in Waterloo. And so, that's how you read this, as you go down through here, you can see, um, uh, areas where we're high, we're low. Uh, one of the things that, um, was just asked, and maybe I can bring it up here in some cohesive way. Uh-oh, now what did I do? Oh, this is a cool board. You gotta, you gotta... All right, just let me play with something long enough and I'll get it. Um, down here on line nineteen, where you have two seventy, our medical and dental benefits, uh, you can see that, uh, our plan is pretty economical. We're over one standard deviation below the mean, uh, for that. So, we're doing really well from a, from a cost perspective, and how much it costs us for our medical and dental. Um, up here, however, in life and LTD, we're nearly, uh, one and a half standard deviations above the mean, which means our, uh, for whatever reason, our life and LTD, and it's probably because we offer, uh, that benefit, and a lot of other school districts don't...
And it's a good one.
Yeah. And it's a good one. It, it makes us a good employer, right? And so, some of these, you have to really dig into the data to figure out whether it's bad or it's good, but it does give you context, right? So, let's go down farther. Um, you were just talking about legal fees. Those fall into this three hundred and forty category down here, and you can see that we're over a standard deviation below the mean, when it comes to expenditures for things like legal fees. Now, there's other stuff rolled in there, and you'd have to pull all that apart, but understand that, uh, that, that's where that would fall. Davenport, nearly, it's over two standard deviations above the mean. Uh, they spend a lot of money in that particular area for some reason.
What's the, what's the line again, Craig?
Three forty.
Three forty, other professional. So, as you go down through here, uh, just some other things, uh, to point out, um, you know, our, uh, our repair and maintenance services, you get over here, we're right on the mean, uh, when it comes to that.
On, on the student transportation...
Look at...
Uh...
Sorry. Yeah. There you go.
He split the screen.
Six seventy.
Okay, okay, just give me some time here.
Yeah, you're getting there.
Yes. Yeah, six seventy, student transportation.
Because of the Durham contract, that's why, is, is it, is it here comparing the supplies, there is a student transportation services is five, ten, so they're kind of too separate, what the supplies is.
Student, student transportation services would be up into the five hundred series, wouldn't it, Leslie?
Five.
Yeah.
Five, ten.
That's in the five, ten, and we're, we're basically right on the standard deviation there, okay? Yep, so that's where that would fall. I don't wanna belabor this, I just wanted you to get this analysis. It's kinda fun to compare ourselves to other urban eight districts in all of these areas, right?
This is a great document. It's really helpful.
And it's heat map, so red is bad and green is good, and, and so you don't have to spend a lot of cognitive, uh, time trying to figure that out.
No, that is over the standard deviation. Bad or good, I think is more subjective.
Right. That's true. Very true.
But it's not the exact gospel. For example, in the, in the, uh, fiscal plant area, we break down our crafts and trades, our custodian, our grounds into a separate function. This is by object, so I'm not gonna get into the weeds with you. But we found when we compared that to the urban ed, some of those districts group all of those categories into one number.
Okay.
So, for that one number, they're gonna look like they're way above the mean, and we're gonna look like we're way below, but they have that flexibility with the Department of Ed's charted accounts. So, from a general perspective, what Craig's presented here gives you that, that range, that whether you're above or below, but just because we're point seven above or below doesn't mean that's exactly that much better because of the variation, uh, across the state and some flexibility that they may have in some categories.
And Leslie's right, we get really frustrated with our fears, because they don't cope that way. They simply don't. And we tell them that on a regular basis, but it doesn't seem to help.
As long as we're doing it right.
We are doing it right. All right, um, another way to look at this is that up here, um, on these first lines are the per pupil amount, and down here is where we rank, uh, in the state, in this particular expenditure area. So, as we take a look at Iowa City here in the mid... per pupil amount and down here is where we rank in the state in this particular expenditure area. So, as we take a look at Iowa City here in the middle, green is good again and red is not as good for the purposes of expenditures. And so, you can see, for instance, what we're spending per pupil for the, in the general fund, administration, instruction, support, operation, and transportation, where we rank. So, for instance, if you look at administration per pupil rank, we're 330 out of 336 school In instruction rank, we're right mid-pack, you know, 213 out of 336 school district. In support staff, over here, we're at 35. That's an area where we do spend more money. And it's really interesting because you can see all these urban schools spend a lot of money in the support staff area. And there's reasons for that. It's because we have different populations on, in which to support students. You're talking about student family advocates, you're talking about social work, you're talking about counselors, you're talking about all those people that are, that are coded to support, nurses, they're all coded to support. And so, those are some things that, that we, that when you start digging into the numbers, you can find. Operation, we're 116 out of 336 and one of the reasons for that is the number of buildings we have. I've talked to you, older board members or more, more tenured board members, I said Shay, that not necessarily. I took a look at Laura and decided that wasn't the right. So, nonetheless, our more seasoned board members, I've mentioned to this to you before, the number of buildings we have really matters because, you know, every one of those is a cost center. And if you take a look at Ankeny over here, there are only 1,000 elementary students behind us and yet they use half the buildings to educate those kids in as we do, literally half the buildings, okay? And so, there's a reason why Ankeny's so green. Well, first of all, I worked there. And Jackie hasn't screwed it up since I left. But second of all, is that it's such a fast-growing community, they have huge schools. I mean, you can go to an elementary school and see 800, 900 kids there, four, five-section, six-section buildings, right? And there's a lot of efficiencies to be gained from a system like that. And all of their buildings are relatively new.
As I say, they probably didn't build a lot in 1919.
You're correct. They don't have the man, the Longfells. That history doesn't exist in that community, right? And so, there's a, there's a reason for that, but I think Iowa City's doing a pretty good, pretty good job. We're giving a pretty good value for our dollar overall when it comes to, when we compare with all of our Iowa schools.
You can also see a little bit of correlation between growing districts or stable districts on that map as opposed to those that are losing as a general trend. You know, Des Moines, Davenport, Council of Luster are losing more than some of the others and so they have some more of those red areas because they just can't downsize in some areas where you need to or as fast as they may be losing students.
Interesting.
We're fortunate to have growth.
Yep.
You simply are.
Some of those heat map things are really interesting when you look at size of districts. If you take some of the real small districts, you know, they all have a superintendent, so spread a superintendent salary over 14,000 students versus several hundred, it changes the dynamics drastically, so. As you see those from what Craig does or anything from I A S B, just keep an eye on that, it's kind of an interesting feature of those kind of maps.
I do this report every year on a high-level basis just to illustrate where our money goes. And the bottom line is that we're a service industry, we hire people and our money goes to salary. And so, you can see that 100 and, nearly 130 million out of our 154 million dollars spent this last year went to pay for people costs, all right? So, the, the bottom line is when you go to reduce your budget, you have to look at where you're spending your money and that's people. And so, one of the things that I try to illustrate in all of this is that out of our total budget, 84 cents out of every dollar spent on personnel costs, only 16 cents goes to those other items. And what are those other items? Well, oh, excuse me, before I get there, where do we put our money? Well, we put it in the classroom. 75% of that 84 cents goes to pay for a teacher. 25% handles all the rest of the, of the staff in the school district. And so, if I, if someone were to ask me, where are your budget priorities? I'd say the classroom because that's where all of our money goes. The next page is your professional services, the next page is supplies, but this is where I just want to end up. I know it's, the hour is getting late and I just need to be a little bit more succinct, but 84 cents on every dollar we spend on personnel costs, 75% of this 84 cents is spent in the classroom. To me, from my chair, it looks like we have our budget priorities in the right place. Other remaining 16 cents, we spend 4 cents on AEA flow-through, we can't help that, that's a law, it's lost money. And unless you ask for services back from the AEA in some form, you don't get this $6 million back.
Is there, could we enumerate that somehow? I mean, I know we get a lot from Grant Wood.
Right.
So, I don't know if there's, who would be the person to say, here's what we're getting for our 6 million bucks, just as a.
And they do a report.
So, they do one?
It's district specific.
Okay.
We even had Joe, Joe Crozier come in, I think it was last year, wasn't it, Steve? And actually give a report to the board about AEA services.
And at the time, he said it was the most detailed he gave us.
Other remaining 12 cents, 9 cents goes to heat and cool our buildings, transport our kids and pay tuition to other school districts. And then, we have 3 cents out of every dollar left over where we're paying for supplies and equipment, textbooks, all those kinds of things. The Senesi report, I don't know if any of you are familiar with that, but in 2012, there was an audit done of the school district. And one of the things that that audit pointed out was that we should probably have more of a centralized purchasing presence in our, our business office. And I do believe that is an area that we can really support and get behind and grow into. But when I, when I look at numbers like this, where that person would only be dealing with less than 3% of our total budget, I mean, you really, you really have to stop and wonder just how much value that brings. And I get it, I get it, I get it. And I would love nothing more than to have someone to do nothing but our purchasing. I think we can save a few bucks. But when it's only 3 cents out of your dollar that you're spending, one would wonder if that's where you really should be putting your money as a priority to buy a person like that, okay? And so, to date, we haven't bought a person like that, all right? We just try to do the best we can interdepartmentally when we do our purchasing and I do think we do a pretty good job, we have a system in place. But nonetheless, just something to think about, just that perspective. Where do you spend your time as a board when you're looking at bills and all of those kinds of things? You can literally spend hours and hours and hours auditing bills and what are you looking at? You're looking at this 3 cents, that's what you're looking at. You're not looking at the 84 cents of all the contracts that are being, paying the people, right? Because you're not doing that when you look at the bills. You do that once a year. And so, that's, that, you, from a big picture point of view, I just really wanted to try and lay that groundwork for you. Where do you spend your time? What's the most important thing for you to do? And how does it all relate together? Do you have a question?
Well, it's 3% of the 156 million or 3% of the 16 cents that isn't personnel is what you're referring to there, right?
Right, there's 16 cents out of our total, total budget, every dollar we spend.
So, it's 3% of the 16?
It's not percent, it's cents.
Cents, okay, right.
Right, 3 cents out of that dollar that we spend.
Of the 16% of this.
Four and a half million. Yeah, so it's 3% of the total.
Just big picture stuff, but it gives you a context, right? All right, budget assumptions, I'm not going to go into those, but primarily what I wanted you to know is that this is last year's document. If you relate back to the calendar, I give you this in January, you helped me with these budget assumptions. We go through this process and what we, what we do here is we go through several areas, taxation, what's happening with hypers, which by the way, we're getting an increase this year. And it's not just a small increase, it's a half a million dollars increase for overall in our budget, so it would be pretty expensive. But anyway, we go through all of these areas and I share these with you in January, you give me some feedback on these and that's the process we use. Here's the allowable growth for this year, I wanted to show you this, I didn't provide this document in Board Docs, but I wanted to show you that if the state gives us zero supplemental state aid, our budget's still going to grow by 1.5%. Quiz, why?
Enrollment.
Enrollment growth, excellent, yeah. Schools are funded by taking your enrollment times your regular cost per pupil, right? And that gives you your regular program district cost for your district, that's the core of your budget. And so, anytime you get enrollment growth, even if the state doesn't fund any more supplemental state aid, we still get the state aid that we got last year, right? And so, that'll be about 1.4 million dollars. Now, you lop off 500,000 for an hypers increase and that gives you about a million dollars to fund all of the increases that we have next year. All right, let's go into the fund spreadsheet. And the fund spreadsheet is our 10-year projection model.
Craig and I define fun.
Very different.
Yeah.
The word spreadsheet.
Well, when you're in my office.
Yeah, they merge together.
Not this.
I can't seem to hit the right one here, there we go. When you're in my office and Leslie's doing fist pumps when the, the bond rating comes out, you know that we don't get out much. So, it's kind of what we do, but, all right. So.
Yeah, we're the fun side of the building.
Yeah, we put the fist pump on the other side, they don't, so they don't bother us. We want to be serious and to the point, we get things down on our side of the room.
Whoa, whoa, wait a minute.
All right, and the superintendent's right in the middle, which is, all right, just to make this less complicated than it looks, one of the things that I just want to point out are some key numbers here. First of all, up in this first line, here are the growth projections that I've plugged into this model. And you can see that back here in 2017, we did get 2.25% growth in state aid, that's an actual number, so that's done. We got 1.11 this year and this is the year that's in progress and I'll go through that in a minute. And next year, I'm projecting a full, robust 1%.
Is that allowable growth or is that what we get?
That's allowable growth. That's, that's, the state needs to come in the legislative session and say, yes, we're going to give you 1%, all right? This is highly in doubt. Have any of you read the governor's theory on school funding this year? I'm looking at zero. And what I want to do is actually go into this live model and show you what it does to our bottom line. I think you'll find that instructive. But in future years, I've become more optimistic. I projected out about a 1.5% growth and, and I don't know, it's anybody's guess at this point in time, all right?
So, can that serve midterm elections, is that when you get more optimistic?
You do, you get more optimistic. This whole upper area here, this is a school aid formula. There's nothing in here that you can change based on student numbers and your allowable growth. This year, don't change. This year, we grew 215.95. Now, what's really interesting, if you dissect that number, is that we gained 53 students for open enrollment this year. We went from 80 to 132 some in open enrollment and open enrollment out, we kept 32 students more, we went down from 399 out to like 360 some out in our latest. And so, it's an 80 to 100 student swing in open enrollment by itself in the, in the certified, in the certified enrollment number, which is pretty interesting with the opening of Liberty, I think it had a lot to do with that. And I know when you open up this next elementary up north, that it's going to have probably a similar impact. And so, as you're going through your boundary, redistricting conversations, that might be one small consideration, right? Anyway, this is all set, so you can't do much with that. Here, let me try this. Ooh, cool. This center section, Leslie and I call the School Budget Review Committee. This is the year we're in and you can see our ELL cost, you just approved that last month where you approved 1.2 million dollars to recover from cost that in excess of the funding we got for our English language learners. We expect that that will continue, probably even to a greater extent. This might be underestimated a little bit. We do ask bests each year, roughly $300,000, but look at this 1.6 million, what's that for?
Liberty.
Liberty, right. Paul remembers that we plugged this in to go to the School Budget Review Committee to recover the initial staffing costs for Liberty. And so, before you get too excited about that number, it actually comes out as an expenditure down here in the expenditure, so they offset one another, but I just wanted you to see that it's in there. Advance for increased funding, this is on-time funding. Because we grew 215 kids this year, that the school, that the, that the school aid formula won't pay us for until next year, we actually can go to the SBRC and get the advanced authority to educate those children, but we have to have cash on hand, that's what part of our cash reserve levy does, it funds that and it's a pure property tax until the, until the state aid kicks in. And then, when they graduate, we actually get a year of counting them when we don't educate them, so we make it up 13 years from now, right? If they're kindergarten. ELL beyond five years, that all adds up. And then, our special ed, the, the cost that we recover in excess of our special ed funding. And I think Janet, you went to a session where they talked a little bit about the, that phenomena in Iowa schools and Iowa City has one of the largest, if not the largest, special ed deficits in the state of Iowa.
Right.
All of that adds up to give you your maximum district cost and we add in our preschool, instructional support levy and projected miscellaneous income. Here's the number I want you to see, your maximum budget authority in this gray line. And so, for this year, we're anticipating about 171 million dollars. We're going to take out 158 million of that for our budget expenses this year and in addition to that, we'll have some costs for Liberty that need to come out, some costs we can't recover for Liberty and then some extra transportation costs and our transportation costs did go up this year because we weren't able to do the, we reduced. costs did go up this year because we weren't able to do the, we reduced so many secondary routes because we opened Liberty, which sounds like a good thing, but we weren't able to pair those with elementary routes where we did a two-tiered system. So, we lost efficiency, okay? So, it ended up costing us a little more this year for our transportation. And then the curriculum cost cycles, we tried to plug in here where we're fluctuating. When they always do a reading adoption, it costs us a lot of money, and that's planned out here in the future. And so, that's what we do. You can see where our unspent balance is. Your superintendent directive is between 5 and 10. Where are we at? We're at 6.6 this last year. We're projecting that'll be about 6.3 after we get done with this budget year, if all things considered pan out. But here's the real crux of the model that I wanted to talk with you about tonight. Our teachers settled last year for 2.68% total settlement, okay? I only have a 2% expenditure growth built into our general fund budget for '19. And given this 1%, we're still spending more than we're bringing in for reoccurring revenue, okay? So, we're really going to have to be very, very efficient with our funds this year. And we're going to have to depend on some retirements and not replacing possibly. We're going to have to figure out areas in which to economize and to save. And if you look at this $173 million, if you kind of keep that in your mind, if I go up here and I change that 1% to 0 in our model, you can see that that backs that down to $171.8 million and drives our unspent balance down significantly, and we're on a downward trend. And don't tell me that underfunding education doesn't have an impact, right? And so, we're really going to have to be pretty conscientious about our expenditures this year. I see little to no flexibility for reducing class size, adding programming, you know, adding transportation, doing any of those things. We just can't add expenditures to our general fund budget. In fact, we need to take away expenditures because this teacher settlement alone is going to cost us more than $1 million, and that's all we have in new money at that 1% projected level. And we still have all the other employee groups to deal with. And so, Jane will get into more detail. This is just a high level for you this evening. But in order to keep your superintendent directive at 5 or above, this number's got to go down. If we're not going to get any more revenue, the only place we have to go is to reduce expenditures. And the only place we have to reduce expenditures is in the 84 cents that we spend on personnel, because we've whittled away at the 16 cents for an awful long time, and there's just not a lot of fluff in there, I can tell you. Almost every penny in there is accounted for in some way, shape, or form. And so, when you go to reduce, you have to go to the 84 cents. That's really, in essence, what I wanted to share with you this evening, kind of that high-level overview of our budgeting process. Leslie, do you have any follow-up conversation?
Yeah, you know, Craig showed how we, you know, drive, each year drives off to the max and how he built this model out. Operationally, we're really kind of working in three years at a time, you know? I'm, Craig are just finishing up last year's information. You'll get the audit report of the December 12 meeting. That will pretty much wrap up last year. Obviously, we're knee-deep, we're deeper in the current year budget, but we're already working on the details for fiscal year '19 and how that 1%, 0% play out, and then how that builds in the future years. But just so you know, operationally, we're just, we have several silos that we're playing in and out of at any given point that represent those years in how we work with our various people. For example, our drop-off prevention program budget will come to you at the December, no, the next, I think, November 28th for approval, but that's for fiscal year '19. So, that shows you how some programs are already looking that far ahead in, at that level of detail for their budget from an operational perspective, so.
That's a good point.
You know, that, you know, and some of these statutory deadlines that Craig showed in that budget calendar then drive all of those things as to where we're at in those cycles, so.
So, hopefully, this provided you an overview of our budgeting process, where you're involved, where you may want to get more involved. I don't know what kind of thoughts or plans you may have. In my world, it all starts with the superintendent of the board, and you make those big policy decisions that then need to be supported by district resources, right? And you shouldn't just, you shouldn't let the tail wag the dog. The dog needs to wag the tail, so to speak, as the analogy goes. And so, you need to provide those guardrails, those policy decisions, those big ideas. This is what we want as our priorities, and then we need to come and try and fill in the gap with how that would work. Now, given our budget constraints, you want to add something, we're going to come back to you and say, "What do you want to take away?", and that'll be a priority decision on your part. And so, those things can get a little bit dicey. We did that in 2015 budget, and we packed the room here several times with some pretty passionate parents about foreign language and our elementary orchestra program and things like that, even athletics. And so, taking away a priority can be a bit of a challenge, something that we've currently been funding. But it's not impossible, and, but that's a decision that the board needs to make.
Thank you. Questions, comments? It's really, really helpful overview. For me, especially having come off the ISB train, it actually makes some sense to me as some orientation there, so I really appreciate that. Other comments or questions? If not, do we need a motion to adjourn?
One thing, I made comments earlier in the meeting about possibly putting a discussion with Alexander and Twain in the upcoming meeting. That's something that the president and the vice president might, if there's room, put it in there. And I know after the meeting, talking with Jane Frye about some of the things that are going on there, staffing, I don't know if that would, we would have time for something like that at this meeting or if it's hold right now.
And in the top, I mean, I'm trying to make sure I understand what the content would be that we would be discussing.
Well, when they were there, they gave us a list of what they wanted and everything like that, and just kind of an explanation to the community. You know, we took a lot of input because the community wasn't at that.
That's all.
It was just staff, and I wasn't at the Twain one, but just reading, you know, what people who were there, just reflecting, showing that you can handle two balls. Just a discussion, I'm just putting that out there because I received, and when I was there at least, I got a very strong message from them that they would like to see us discuss.
Okay. So, we spent time on the agenda for the 28th today, but there's no room on the 28th, you can straighten it on the list.
Sure. No, yeah, I would bring it up, but I was just going to say, if there was room to put it up there just to show, you know.
Okay. Very good. Anything else?
I guess my question would be, Craig, in your calendar, you have that you leave goals of, remember.
Yeah, we've not always...
Work education goals, yeah.
We've not always been able to complete that with fidelity in this time, but if the board has a process that you want to set up to determine those goals with the superintendent, that was a good time.
That would be maybe a topic for a board retreat. We'll have to do a poll out about getting some time set aside for a board retreat. Is there a motion to adjourn?
There would be a adjourn.
Sorry.
All in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
Thank you all.